We'll call this meeting to order. It is 7:02. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm Ed Heron, Vice President of the Board. Kate Parker is out of town, so I will be handling the meeting, and welcome everyone. Glad to see you here. In the closed session, Item B2, which was the approval/deny of application for inter-district transfers, in the consideration of inter-district transfer appeals, the Board agreed to grant the appeals in three cases and denied the appeals in six cases. For confidentiality purposes, the student names are protected under FERPA. We also on B4 did approve Casey Waivers. We do have a Spanish translator available?
Sí, muy buenas noches y bienvenidos de parte de la junta directiva del Distrito Escolar de Santa Barbara. Si hay alguien que habla español y necesita la ayuda de un intérprete, por favor levante la mano para ayudarles y dale un audífono. Gracias.
We also have headsets for the hearing impaired. Introductions, proclamations, presentations, and recognitions. Dr. Sarvas. We will send out for Dr. Sarvas. Do you want to go with the student report from La Cuesta? Are you ready? Oh, here it comes. Okay.
Well, we do have presentation tonight. Tonight, we have with us San Marcos students and cast members from production of Man of La Mancha. And students, I'd like to introduce you and give you the forum here right at the podium, if you'd go ahead and go to the podium. We have with us tonight, since Director David Holmes is unable to be here, we have Gary Fields, who played the part of Don Quixote.
Yes.
Great job. Thank you. Sancho Panza, would you please tell me your name? Is it Anki?
Yes, Anki Budiarijono.
Anki Budiarijono.
Yep.
Thank you. And Kristi Hep as Aldonza, Kristi, and stage manager Zoe Prokopiek. Whoops, I lost the P here in my version. And crew member Noelle Berger.
Berger.
Berger. Thank you.
Okay, so the San Marcos High School Theater Department's production of Man of La Mancha opened on April 30th, and we had our opening weekend, and it was very, very successful, and we got a lot of great feedback from the audience, and everyone was really excited about the show. And our second weekend was cut short by three of our shows. We performed once on Thursday, but unfortunately canceled the rest of our shows due to the chaos caused by the fire. So we will be presenting Man of La Mancha this weekend, on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. Tickets are $10, general admission, and $8 for senior citizens and students, and also anyone displaced by the fire, anyone who left halfway during our show on Thursday, any fire officials, police officers get in free of admission charge. So we have our show this weekend, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. So, Gary?
Yeah. The show this year is really special in the sense that, from what I've heard from people who've seen the show numerous times, even though we've only had three performances, they keep saying, you know, "Oh, it's one of the best shows I've seen at San Marcos in a really long time." And we have a history of excellence at San Marcos in our performing arts department. But having been in the past four musicals, I can really vouch for what they're saying. I think that there's a certain level that this show reaches that I haven't felt in any other show. It's terribly inspiring. It's all about hope and overcoming insurmountable odds. And it's just an absolutely incredible performance, also in the sense that one thing that is pretty unique to our school is that really the show is ours. It belongs to the students. It's run by our crew, the actors, the orchestra. We really don't have any adult in charge during the show. All our director, Mr. Holmes, does. He opens the theater. And then from then on, it's our show from 5:00 until, you know, 10:00 or whatever, when we're done. So that's one thing that's really special to San Marcos that I just find incredible and is extremely present in this show. Anki or Noelle?
Just to touch on what Gary said, it is run entirely by crew once opening night. Mr. Holmes steps back. Our stage manager takes charge. It's student calling the keys, calling the cues, pushing, a person pushing the keys to make the lights go, the sound. And it's just the actors, they go, and it's really student-run, and it's really great.
So I wanted to touch on the one performance that we got last week was on Thursday night. So the beginning was going really well. People were there. We got about the same amount of audience that we got the week before for opening night, which is pretty amazing considering everything that was going on in town. And everything was going really smoothly. Everything was wonderful. The actors still had all of their emotion, and everything was really great. And then we had intermission, and everyone goes outside, and everyone finds out that the entire mountain is on fire. And so after that, there was quite a bit of panic, and most of the audience didn't want to come back inside. They were too busy worrying about their homes, calling their family, making sure everything was okay. So we extended our intermission, naturally. We all just kind of hung around. We tried to keep people calm. And eventually, we did go back to the show. I think it was estimated that only about 60 members of the audience out of 300 left, which is really quite impressive. And we continued with the show. Most of the people backstage were trying to stay calm. Noelle, with the help of Noelle, because she doesn't, she has certain cues where she has time where she could go on her cellphone and check up for people, like, "You're still not in evacuation. You're okay. Calm down. It's gonna be all right." And during intermission, everyone had called everybody, so everyone was still calm. And by the end of the show, everybody was doing okay, and we had our meeting in the auditorium after all of the audience had left. And we all talked and made sure everyone had rights to go home, that everyone wasn't just going really nilly, and that their parents didn't know where they were. And it was really quite impressive, because nobody really freaked out. People were scared, but everybody held it together and just got the show done, and it went well. So.
I really didn't have anything prepared today, but I just wanted to say that, I mean, when was the last time we were in such a horrible and desperate situation that we just gave up thinking it was all for the better for us and for, you know, so many people? And this show, this show just teaches us, you know, to have, to dream the impossible dream and to just reach for the unreachable star. And it's just, to me, it's been one of my just principles, to live as if you're just, you're just always going with, I don't know how to put it in words, because it's just such a, I mean, I'm gonna say it again, to dream the impossible dream. And to march through, you know, everything that you're going through, no matter how bad it is, that you're just going with what you have in your mind and your hope. And your hope is what keeps you alive and just strive for that hope. And I think it was Dale Wasserman himself, I'm butchering the quote, but it was Dale Wasserman himself who had said that the dream not, doesn't only have to be difficult, but it has to be so impossible, so true to your heart, that you aren't able to maybe reach it in this lifetime. You aren't even able to, you know, to get to it with, no matter how much support you have, but you still think that it is so right that you're still going for that dream. And the, the action of living so that you can get closer to that dream, that goal, that quest, that is what Man of La Mancha is about. And it's an extremely exquisite musical, and I am so happy to be just a part of it. Even if I had a small part, I'm so happy to be in it. And I encourage you all to come. So, thank you.
And one last thing. As President of the Madrigal Singers at San Marcos, I'd like to invite everyone to the San Marcos High School encore concert. Our choir just recently took first place in our Festival of Gold in our division, so we're having a concert on May 27 at 7:00 at San Roque Church. So we hope to see you guys this weekend and at the concert on the 27th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very inspirational. I've heard nothing but good things about it.
That's it for presentations tonight.
Okay, how about your superintendent's report?
Well, Board, this have been an unusual two weeks. We had braced for the H1N1 flu virus, and as the situation began to taper off, the Jesusita fire hit. Ultimately, all schools were closed by noon on Friday of last week. We watched each day and made the judgment call as early as we could in the afternoon or evening. Our schools supported the community in many ways. Santa Barbara Junior High served as a helicopter landing site and loading site. Dos Pueblos served as a helicopter landing site, as well as a Red Cross evacuation center. Lacumbra Junior High housed a contingent of firefighters. And this Thursday will be the site of a community meeting regarding the fire that is arranged by the City of Santa Barbara and the State of California. In fact, it was sort of cute that I had a captain call me, who was on the road from Orange County, and told me he had six trucks, 17 men. They were dirty. They were looking for a shower. So I sent them directly to Lacumbra Junior High. We're gathering information about staff and students that may have returned to damaged or destroyed homes. We have both staff and students who have lost homes. At this time, we know of one teacher and four students who did lose their homes. We're also working with Santa Barbara County Office of Emergency Services regarding verification that our schools were closed at their direction, or at least with their consultation, which makes a big difference when you're working with the Department of Education and ADA and instructional minutes requirements. Because of the Jesusita fire, Santa Barbara High and San Marcos High revised their advanced placement exam schedule, which is now posted on our website, and it's posted on the school websites as well. They're going to the makeup days. Santa Barbara High School postponed their prom. Once a new date is determined, the information will be posted on the district and the school websites. Thanks to the Board's commitment to improve communication, last fall, you will remember that Board members approved the tele-parent contract. The phone call-out system has enabled us to notify parents in a very timely manner regarding emergencies and is being used by schools to keep parents informed for school events. It used to be the case that if the school was making calls to parents using their computerized system, it might take four hours to handle one high school's round of calls over, over a number of leased lines. We are now able to put out 16,000 calls in one minute. With the hard work of Nick Sebastian and Ann Peake over the weekend, we were able to turn tele-parent into tele-staff and notify all staff that our schools would be reopening on Monday, May 11, that we'd be in full operation. I'm proud of how our employees all pulled together to meet their, this community crisis. And I can't say enough about the fine work of Barbara Kiani, our Coordinator of Administrative Services and Communications, for her work at the Santa Barbara County Emergency Operations Center in keeping everyone informed. FICMAT recently set their preliminary findings and recommendations regarding their special education review. Board members have copies. It's being translated and will soon, very soon, be on the district website. We went to publish it with the last Board Brief. It'll go out with this, this Board Brief that's coming out this Friday. The final report from FICMAT is not expected until June. It's expected early June. We will schedule a presentation of their report at the earliest possible meeting in June. My office regularly issues a report to the Board called the Board Brief. It's a collection of reports and articles on school and district matters. A copy of the May 1 Board Brief is on display in the reception area or can be provided through my office. I'd like to highlight just two of the items. In the last Board Brief, which I believe was May 1, a list of training and outreach activities and special education was provided for the Board and the public. Staff ideas on strategies to impact youth violence that are being studied by the Steering Committee was included in that report as well. Employee Appreciation Day, which was scheduled for last Thursday, had to be postponed. We are working on a new date for the event, and we'll let you know that date. And in upcoming events, we have a flyer on the side table, and I believe Board members have the same flyer. I won't list all the times and dates, but listen for a school and an event and take a look so you can see what you'd like to attend. San Marcos High School, Man of La Mancha is still playing. Dos Pueblos High School's Jazz Band Spring Concert is coming up. San Marcos High School's Spring Instrumental Music Concert. Santa Barbara High School's Spring Choral Concerts, Acapella Choir, Madrigal Singers, Men and Women's Ensembles. Franklin Elementary School, All-School Art Show. Dos Pueblos High School, Their Musical World is coming up. Dos Pueblos High School Spring Vocal Music Concert, featuring the Jazz B Vocal Ensemble and Instrumental Combo, Acapella Choir, and Mixed Chorus. Dos Pueblos High School Concert Band and Orchestra Spring Concert. And Dos Pueblos High School Jazz Choir and Combo Benefit Performances. And that's it for tonight's superintendent's report. We do have a student report coming up.
Okay, I want to thank you.
Mr. Vice President.
Yes.
I rise to a point of personal privilege.
Yes.
I want to thank the superintendent for his efforts to get the FICMAT report out. I think it's a terrific idea that you're having it translated and putting it on the website. I know that would be well-received in the public, and I appreciate that very much. And I also wanted to comment on Barbara Kiani's fine work. It came to my attention during the crisis. And that and this marvelous call system, but the human touch that she added to it and the, and the coordination was really remarkable, and I commend her and your whole staff for everything that they did.
Thank you.
I would like to add to Barbara. I met her once early morning. She had evacuated. And I have a feeling, since I evacuated again that same night, you probably evacuated again that same night. Yeah, so between all the evacuations, you still got a wonderful job done, so thank you, Barbara. And we have a student report from La Cuesta.
From La Cuesta, we have Maria Garcia and Lupita Valades.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Maria Garcia, and I'm a senior at La Cuesta Santa Barbara. I've been at La Cuesta, I've been at La Cuesta on the Santa Barbara High School campus for three years. This year, we were moved to the downtown site. There were a lot of changes made that took me some time to get used to, but I am very happy with the changes. There are more students together, more activities, such as electives on Friday mornings, and we have gone on many more field trips. We have walked to the pier and seen the Taiwan Marine Center, which I had never been to before. We walked to the Art Museum to look at displays from different artists, and then created our own art with the help of Tina from the Art Museum. We also displayed our art in the Art Museum gift store window. That was nice to be able to put our art out there for the public to appreciate. I felt very proud. I felt even more proud when La Cuesta nominated me to receive the Santa Barbara Chamber of Commerce Award, which I won, thanks to them. The teachers here are always willing to help me. I like having five different classes with different teachers who each have their own style of teaching. It makes it day more interesting. I actually like coming to school more on this campus. If I need something, I can just ask the staff, either the principal, counselor, or Tony, our community outreach person. I've been working harder, and I don't want to leave. We have had many people from Santa Barbara City College come to speak to the seniors, such as Adolfo from Running Star, Veronica from TEP, and Michael from SPPC Outreach. I've been on two college field trips, went to Cal State Channel Islands, and went to Santa Barbara City College. This have encouraged me to attend college. In fact, after the Santa Barbara Scholarship Foundation came to explain how to apply for a scholarship, I applied, and I received a $1,500 scholarship. My senior year at La Cuesta has been great. I am going to miss everyone and everything, but I am ready to go out to college. Thank you, everyone, and have a good night.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Lupita Valades, and I'm a student at La Cuesta High School. The coming events at La Cuesta are the following. We will be having our first annual career day, which got rescheduled due to the Jesusita fire on May 20 through May 8. You're welcome to join us. There will be presentations in classrooms from 9:00 AM to 11:40 AM. From 11:40 AM to 12:15 PM, there will be a community service fair in the interior courtyard with presentations from fire, military and district maintenance, and personnel in the back of the school. The senior award night will be held on Wednesday, May 27, from 6:00 PM to 7:00 PM here in the boardroom. Graduation rehearsal and senior graduation luncheon will be on Tuesday, June 2. Graduation will be on Wednesday, June 3 at 3:15, sorry, 5:15 PM at the Courthouse in Kin Gardens. We will also be having a school-wide barbecue activities and awards ceremony June 4 at Tuckers Grove Park. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move to public comment. I would like to just set some ground rules. Unless we have an overabundant of speakers, we'll try to give each speaker three minutes, but we'll know on each item how many we have. In accordance with the policy, each speaker is limited to three minutes or less. When a speaker wishes to comment on multiple items, his or her time may be limited so as to not interfere with the timely completion of the Board's business. With the pleasure of the Board, I'd like to limit that to a total of 10 minutes. Thank you. Do we have public comment?
Yes, we do. We have six speakers. The first one is Maureen O'Hagan. Am I saying that correctly? And followed by Kelly Rosemond.
Hello, and good evening to everybody on the Board and everybody here in the boardroom. My name is Maureen O'Hagan, and I am this year's ASB Activities and Student Leadership Advisor for Santa Barbara High School. I have come to speak on behalf of the fiscal solvency plan, specifically Letter J, Action Item J on that plan, to charge the students at each of the three high schools $16,000 per each school to pay for part of the ASB bookkeeper salary at that school. We have a few other speakers lined up to talk about that point specifically, and they will be citing ed code and other specifics for that, so I'll let those speakers do that, so I'm not repeating what everybody's gonna say. What I would like to speak on is just the practicality of having the students have to fundraise. Having been the person in charge of fundraising for ASB at Santa Barbara High School, I can tell you how difficult it is to rally the students to go above and beyond, volunteer their time, most of the time outside of school hours, to pull off fundraisers. It's been hard enough to raise these $6,000 to $8,000 just to pay for the senior activities, such as graduation and, you know, our senior awards nights and things like that. Realistically, if this $16,000 bill is attached to the ASB, let's see, at this point in time, we cannot do any of these food fundraisers, which have previously been the biggest moneymakers for the schools. We're no longer allowed to sell food on campus aside from just four specific days a year. So at this point, the easiest fundraisers for us to go to would be something like car washes or working in partnership with businesses in town, such as Wahoo's, Fish Tacos, Panda Express, the other different restaurants that are willing to do like a food night for a fundraiser and give us 20% of the proceeds. Those car washes and food nights with the different restaurants average anywhere from $200 to $500 for each actual event that we would raise.
30 seconds.
Okay, so if we had $400 per night to raise $16,000, we would have to do 40 of those events. There's only 37 weeks in the school year. We would have to do over one fundraiser a week for that type of action to make it happen. Or we'd have to charge the students like $10 a student at school to actually pay for that position, and it just seems really outside of my job description to have to fundraise to pay for somebody's salary when it's gonna take so much of our time. Thank you. Everybody else will add to that.
Thank you, Ms. O'Hagan. Kelly Rosemond, followed by, I'm sorry, Aywami Arumi, sorry. Salman Bello.
Hi, I'm Kelly Rosemond. I'm the Santa Barbara High School Bookkeeper. For the ASB, I also do a lot of the purchasing and management of specific types of stuff for the payroll at the high school. Obviously, it's the students' money, so I can't tell them what to do with it. I have no problem with them going forward and trying to decide how they're going to handle this situation. Obviously, in these bad economic times, we all need to take into consideration how students, schools, communities can pay for things. My only concern, and this is an auditory, or an audit concern, is when the auditor comes to the school on a yearly basis and asks me, "Why is the ASB paying for your salary?" How do I answer that? And at some point, if this actually goes forward, I need to have that information to tell them, "Okay, this is why the ASB is paying for my salary." And this is how we've been able to make it legal according to the ed code, as well as the ASB process and procedures laid out by FICMAT. So if you guys can answer that when we actually get to that point, I would much appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Aywami?
Yeah, Arumi.
Oh, Arumi, I'm sorry.
Salmeron.
Oh, Salmeron, I'm sorry. Beo, okay. Sorry. Followed by Ellie Iverson.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Arumi Salmeron Beo, and I am Santa Barbara High School's ASB president for the upcoming school year. As you will hear from my peers, we believe that Point J in the fiscal solvency plan is a serious mistake. As president, it is my duty to speak for the students of Santa Barbara High School, and I speak for the majority when I say that our associated student body simply cannot afford to pay for a percentage of the bookkeeper's salary. It is our duty to provide for the well-being of our peers, and that is exactly what we do with our hard-earned funds. We request that we are given the opportunity to vote on this budget cut as it affects our financial stability as a school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ellie Iverson, followed by Camille Phillips.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Ellie Iverson, and I am the ASB Vice President. I'm here, of course, to talk about Point J in the fiscal solvency plan, and I want to point out that I did read the news press this morning, and I do know what state you guys are in as far as the amount of money that could be saved through propositions 1A and 1B, and what money would put you in debt if these don't pass. And I understand that that's an extremely serious situation that you've been put in. But at the same time, I feel it's necessary to express my concern on having the associated student bodies for each of the high schools pay for the salary of the bookkeeper. I feel that this is a wrong choice for the school board, mainly because the bookkeeper, while she does work with our finances, she works with a lot of other things that go on in the school, and she has multitudes of additional duties that we cannot be responsible for. In addition, the fundraising that we do cannot be expanded as much as it would take to raise the money for paying for this position, mainly due to the fact that, as Ms. Mo said, we do only have four days to sell food on campus, and that's one of our main incomes for fundraising, and we don't have the manpower to work these fundraisers. One of the things that Mr. Heron asked for is some additional ideas about how you could raise money for this position other than what we do through fundraising. And I believe that due to the fact that you are taking money from the school through parking costs, that that possibly could be used by having students pay for parking each semester. That money goes directly to the district. And if you could somehow use a percentage of that money that you make through parking to give back to the students and pay for the bookkeeper, then that could help alleviate the cost. I hope that you understand that we, as a student body, need to have a vote and a say- in how our money is used because we do work so hard to raise that money and it's necessary for us to be able to say what we believe is right. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Camille Phillips, followed by Kate Smith.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Camille Phillips and I am the current ASB treasurer for Santa Barbara High School. Today, I'm here to express my grievances on the recent attempted charge of 25% of our ASB bookkeeper's salary to our own personal student-raised funds. The charge is otherwise known as Point J of the recent fiscal solvency plan. Not only is this budget cut illegal, but it also requires a sum that is nearly impossible for our ASB class to pay. As shown in Education Code 48937, quote, "The governing board of any school district shall provide for the supervision of all funds raised by any student body or student organization using the name of the school. The cost of supervision may constitute a proper charge against the funds of the district. The governing board of a student district may also provide for continuing audit of the student body funds with school district personnel," end quote. This direct quotation explains that you, the Santa Barbara school board, should not only provide our school with a bookkeeper, but also pay the necessary salary. This code is one of the many pieces of evidence against the illegalities that are present in your recent budget cut plans. As to our actual ability to pay this hefty sum, it is simply not possible. What you see when you look at Santa Barbara High School's funds is that we have $367,747 to spend as we please and that 25% of the bookkeeper's salary is an insignificant amount for our, quote-unquote, "well-off" school. But in actuality, that money is spread out over 100 clubs, sports teams, theater art and musical groups on campus. Our own personal ASB class would not be able to handle that large of a sum. Therefore, we would have to take that hard-earned fundraised money from unprepared and unaware groups. If you force us to empty our accounts, then that might eliminate the prom for seniors, for instance, or maybe one of our Division I sports teams would not be able to follow their dreams to the finals because we simply do not have the funds to transport them there. Although these small events may seem insignificant compared to the tremendous burden you bear from the recent budget cuts, it is my school-
Thirty seconds.
...and my culture and I cannot stand by and see it get destroyed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Kate Smith, followed by Brian Joseph.
I think that Camille Phillips and that whole row of students and staff could run Santa Barbara High School. It's not a laughing matter, Camille. I'm very serious.
Can you keep your comments to the board, please?
I'm asking that the Santa Barbara community vote no on 1A through E because you are inept in your management of our school funds and in the school operations. Arnold Schwarzenegger told me in front of 50 people at the Dos Pueblos Evacuation Center, "I would love to talk to you about school corruption. You contact me." I have not been home since Tuesday morning, May 5th. I am taking this government to court on May 15th. I have a map. I read to you Bonnie Switak's declaration that I am in the school district, but I live at Gibraltar Road at Gibraltar Dam. And at Dos Pueblos, they put up a map that showed Gibraltar Road at Flores Flats, which is-
Thirty seconds.
...defended by our fire department at this moment. And there's a Gibraltar Road coming out of Gibraltar Dam. It was an illegal retaliatory tactic. I have eight more lawsuits that will be filed in pro per. You will be found judged and wanted.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Brian Joseph?
I'd like to call to everyone's attention, the mission statement on the board says, "Achieve academic excellence." And for me, academic excellence is predicated on a good learning environment, correct? And unfortunately, if you pass the J section where you burden ASB with $16,000 of extra expenses, you're effectively crippling ASB and their ability to provide a good learning environment. We put on numerous events, including prom, pep rallies, different food events. We just had this thing called the Front Lawn Fiasco a couple days ago, a couple weeks ago, excuse me, and it was a wildly successful event. We had, you know, hundreds of students out on the lawn participating in, you know, a group activity and, you know, that creates happy students. Happy students do well on their test scores. Santa Barbara High School is in program improvement and if you want these kids, you know, to do well in school, you gotta, you know, they have to be happy, you know? It's as simple as that. So that's the first point. Second point, unfortunately, this is, this Project J or whatever it's called, J section is actually illegal. Camille mentioned this, I don't know the actual wording in law, but it's illegal. So I'm just laying this out for you. So we've got one, academic excellence. Two, it's illegal. Third, if we're paying for our accountant, it seems to me a little bit of a conflict of interest. You know, I'm reminded of some events, you may remember Enron, Rollcom. You know, if we're paying for our own accountant, it seems that, you know, interests are conflicting a little bit. So that's my three points I'm bringing to the table. I'm senior class president and I'm very worried that if you guys pass this, this law, that ASB will have difficulty, you know, serving our student body. So thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Joseph. That concludes public comment.
Thank you all very much. I will make one short comment and I have mentioned this to Ms. Iverson and I heard the word "illegal" twice tonight from two speakers and I wish you would all reread 48937 with emphasis on the line, "The cost of supervision may constitute a proper charge against the funds of the district." It doesn't say it will be charged. It said, "If we want to do it, we can pay for it." And I'm not saying, you know, we're not gonna reconsider. I think we probably are looking into it. But before you use the word "illegal," read the words very closely because that's an inflammatory thing that causes us to go in all sorts of different directions when we're trying to work together. So reread it from that context, please.
Mr. Vice President, I would like to comment, ask a question, really. Is there not some way, Dr. Sarvis, that this could, the clock could have been rolled back and we could have heard all this before the budget decisions? That we could have had outreach to these wonderful students who are articulating their positions and advocating so well? To me, it would have made, I think it would have made a difference in my views about my sense of priorities and budget. Now, it's sort of after the fact and it's always hard to roll things back and start over again. That's a question.
Could we have done differently?
Well, can we, can we, I just, I think the student input is so valuable and if there's some way we can institutionalize it so we get it more often, we get it in a timely fashion, it would be extremely helpful and serve the public interest, in my opinion.
Well, as you know, we clearly and publicly put out all of these issues and we had people weighing in on many of the issues in advance of the meeting. In fact, you saw that early, early on in April. If you're thinking that the board should reconsider any of these items, you can certainly propose that. We can put it on a board agenda.
We can talk about that at the proper section of the meeting where we talk about future agenda items. And we always want the input. We always want student input and everybody else's input, so we do appreciate it and, you know, it's, we have a lot of factions. So let's move on with-
Can I make one small comment on that?
I think we're through public comment and you can let us know individually. C4 is acceptance of donations.
Move to approve with, I'm sorry, move to accept with appreciation?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Heron?
Yes.
May I ask that we return for just a moment to announcements from closed session to C2 before we leave this section and we report out who made the motion and who seconded the motion.
On B2, Dr. Noel made the motion, seconded by Mrs. Deacon. And on B4, Mrs. Cordero made the motion, seconded by Susan Deacon.
Good. Thank you very much. And both the votes were four zero.
On the consent calendar, consent agenda, Dr. Sarvis, you have one you want to remove?
Yes, we're removing D13. We will bring it back to you at our next meeting.
And just so the public knows, the reason for the removal is not that we're removing the project, we just have some individual items to work out on the bid.
Postponing that one board meeting.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
I would like to pull Item D5 and Item D6.
Any others? Dr. Noel?
Yes, D4 and D10, as well as D6.
Mrs. Deacon?
Those cover the ones I was interested in as well.
I would like to move to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And we will come back to D4, D5, D6 and D10. We'll go to the action items. Number E1, action on military uniforms at high school graduation.
And I'll ask Robin Swawski, our associate superintendent, to introduce this.
Okay, we will, yes, this is a continuing item. We began speaking about it before and as you can tell from the memo, since the May 5th board meeting, when we did talk about this, there is a pending, we found that there's a pending Assembly Bill, AB 1463, which really addresses the same subject. And basically, the bill specifies that students participating in graduation ceremonies must wear the prescribed cap and gown except where a student has completed the basic training required for and is an active member of any armed branch of the United States Military, in which case the student has the right to wear the dress uniform issued to him or her by that military branch while participating in the graduation ceremony for his or her high school. So this is the additional piece of information that we have. We still want to have the, based on the board's discussion and all, we want to have the board make a decision whether we should adhere to the current practice, which is having all students wear a cap and gown, to grant an exception for this year or to revise the current board policy that we have, 5127, in alignment with this pending bill. So it's up to the board for discussion. I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any.
Okay, I think we have a letter from, do you want to read that letter now or after public comment?
Yes, we did, well, we can after the comment if you'd like.
Let's do the public comment, yes. Do we have public comment on this issue? No public comment? So we have a letter Dr. Sarvis wants to read.
We did have a request from Kate Parker, our board president, to have this letter read. It's about action on military uniforms at graduation. She says, "Fellow board members, in February 2005, staff at the Dos Pueblos International and Baccalaurate Program gave a presentation to the board about the impressive achievement of their IB scholars and what they were accomplishing each year. The international baccalaurate coordinator then stated that they would like their scholars to wear a distinctive IB hood at the Dos Pueblos graduation ceremony. I was not a member of the board at the time, but I listened from the audience as board members discouraged the Dos Pueblos IB staff from making that request. The board members felt that the graduation ceremony was about each class as a whole and not about expressing individual achievement beyond the longstanding tradition of wearing simple cords to denote membership in the National Honors Society or California Scholarship Federation. While it is rare for the board to hear a request to wear something different to express individual achievement at a high school graduation ceremony, it is, in fact, not rare at all for principals to receive these requests. Each school has academies and other programs that would love their students to stand out at graduation. Students do many wonderful things that are worthy of recognition at that ceremony and they absolutely do ask principals on a regular basis if they can wear hoods, sashes, stoles and so forth to demonstrate their accomplishments. And every time principals, staff, principals tell staff, students and parents that graduation is about celebrating each class as a whole, however, there is always pressure to make an exception. This year, the board is discussing whether to make such an exception and allow military uniforms to be worn at graduation instead of the cap and gown. Indeed, the California Legislature is currently considering the same question. If the proposed legislation to allow active-duty military personnel to wear their dress uniforms is chaptered into law, then it will be a simple matter for the board, the school board, to change its policy without opening itself up to more and more requests to make exceptions to graduation attire. However, if the California Legislature does not pass this law and if this board moves ahead anyway to allow dress uniforms at graduation, it would be putting principals in the board in a very difficult position. Parents, teachers and students will point to this case as they make their requests in the future and I do not see how principals or even board members could say no. It is very difficult to judge one student's accomplishments against another's. Our graduation ceremonies will begin to appear quite different than they do today and I'm not sure that any of us would be happy with what they would ultimately look like. My father was a career Air Force pilot and I grew up with, as a member of a military family. I have deep respect for any young man or woman who is willing to make the kind of commitment and sacrifice it takes to become a member of our armed services. Absent a decision by the state, there currently is a time when individual accomplishments are recognized and celebrated at our high schools and that is during the senior awards assemblies. Members of the military already come to these assemblies and make presentations and awards to our students. And I certainly believe this would be an excellent time for any graduating senior who is an active-duty service member to wear a dress uniform and be honored for his or her outstanding achievement. As for graduation, I'm sorry that the state legislative decision has not yet been finalized. It's awkward timing and the board may want to grant a single exception in this case rather than changing policy at this point. Thank you and good luck with your decision. So Kate Parker, who could not be with us tonight, sends her thoughts from afar.
Members of the board?
I'm happy to lead off. I hated every moment I was in the military, but I am eternally grateful for having had the experience. It turned my life around. And I'm mindful of what some parents have told me of the impact and that this experience has on today's young people. And particularly, the pride that many of them take in their uniform, the pride that it brings to their families. And for many, we're talking about, in many of these instances I've heard about, we're talking about kids whom we would deem as at-risk kids who find in this something very fulfilling and the sense of pride that sticks with me. The families are so proud and I think my experience is irrelevant. It's what matters to these kids. And I think, and I don't want to justify my position in terms of, I don't want to wave the flag and- wave the flag and, and, and do it and, you know, appeal to a sense of patriotism and so on. To me, I'm, I support allowing them to do it, and I do so for these kinds of very personal reasons having to do with the connection that kids make.
Mrs. Cordero?
Well, I think Mrs. Deacon and I probably both made our, oh, I won't speak for you, might have changed your mind, but we certainly both spoke on this at our last meeting. And I really believe that our, that this decision should not reflect whether we think the military, that military service has value or not, or whether we support the military conflict that our country is currently in. Because I don't think this should be a political decision. I think this should be a decision that we make based on what we think is appropriate for the students and for the district. As a longtime anti-war activist, it probably came as quite a shock to many people that I actually support the notion of allowing students to wear their military uniform. And it has nothing to do with how I feel about the military or its role in our society. It has everything to do with the fact that I think, as a society, we have clearly identified beyond just those of us on the board, beyond just my own personal opinions, that we hold that service in a very different light than we hold many other things that exist in our society. And because of that, I think it carries a very different meaning to the people who participate in it, as well as the people who choose not to participate in it. And because of that, I think that its meaning goes beyond just, I, I, I feel a little uncomfortable suggesting that if we do this, we will, if we, if we allow students to wear their military uniform, that we might also then have to allow people to wear their, you know, athletic uniforms, or a different kind of robe, et cetera, because none of those things really hold the same place in our society as a whole that military service does. And it's sort of, you know, regardless of my own personal feelings about that, I think that is very different for the people who are involved in it. So I actually think that we should allow, it would so, it's such a rare occurrence, I feel that we are taking, you know, a very small number, probably, in this case, probably for this year would be one person, allowing them to do it, I don't think is going to disrupt the unity or meaning of anybody's graduation ceremony. I can't imagine that the other students graduating are going to feel any less proud of their accomplishments because somebody else is wearing a different, you know, attire. So if, I would be perfectly happy to support making a one-time exception until we find out the, the outcome of this assembly bill. But I do think in the interest of goodwill, allowing the student to wear something that clearly means a great deal to him and his family is the appropriate thing to do.
Mrs. Deacon?
Well, I guess I'll start by saying what a difference a week makes. Now that we have this proposed legislation, I have not changed my mind. I, to tell you the truth, with all the gut-wrenching decisions we had to make recently, this one was actually very easy for me to make, and that was a pleasure. I do think it's quite appropriate to make this exception, and I think we can draw the exception in a very narrow way. And I know our legal counsel has advised us to do that as well, that, that we can make an exception for active-duty military. And I just want to reiterate that, that I'm very mindful of, of the hard tasks that our administrators have. And our decision, or my decision at least, doesn't any way diminish the, kind of the thicket of, of regulations and policies that we ask them to navigate. And so, you know, I appreciate the, the work that they do. But I, I do think that, that the board has a role in this, and informal polls that I've done show that people from all ages actually don't really have a problem with this. I do think that it's appropriate to make an exception for something that really is an exceptional situation, you know, the young men and women in our military really make a true commitment. And this is not about political ideology. And I have to say, I'm a child of the seventies, and my, my college senior class did not wear caps and gowns to protest the Vietnam War, so that was a long time ago, but that was something very different than I think that, that we're confronted with here. So I, I would like to make a motion to go ahead and to actually, to change the board policy to reflect that of the administrat, of, of the, the AB that is proposed, because I don't think I'm going to change my mind if the legislature doesn't pass this. So I would go ahead and make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Under discussion, I'll make my comments. Because of AB fourteen sixty-three, and it did pass the Assembly Committee eleven to zero, and it's going to be voted on next week in the Assembly, and anything I found out from my contacts is that it will pass. So that, that is going to make my decision on probably supporting the motion. But I have to say, if I was here last week without the knowledge of this bill, I would elect that at first, I, I like to try to support principals. And the principals all felt that fifty years, or sixty years, or a hundred years of tradition mean something. This is one of those issues that you're going to be wrong, you're going to be right to some people and wrong to some people. There's no question about it. And I would hope the dialogue would be kept in that context, that, you know, there are, it's not a right or a wrong, it's not a good or a bad, it's people with different opinions. I've watched the blogs, and, and there are good people saying, don't do it, and there are good people saying, do it. So it's just one of those things that, you know, graduation, from a tradition standpoint, it's caps and gowns, you know, fifty years ago, I wore a cap and gown, and every year since then, they've worn caps and gowns at several of our high school, I believe. Mark's here, he can make sure. But, you know, so I would have supported the principals in their concept because I think they, they know what's going on on their campus. And also, if you read the board policy, graduation is to celebrate the achievement of our students, you know, the academic achievement, the success of our students in the academic world. So I would have also said that probably last week. But in light of AB fourteen sixty-three, and Mrs. Cordero so eloquently put her point of view out, and Mrs. Deacon, and Dr. Noel, I think it's obvious to board and would like this to happen. And whether it's an individual exception or based upon this legislation, I guess if the legislation doesn't pass, we can come back and look at it again if necessary, but I'll be, I'll be voting for the motion.
I'd just also like to quickly comment. I just want to comment that absent direction from the board, which we had not, we have not taken yet, or given yet, I think the principals made the correct decision and the correct recommendation. That was what the recommendation and decision that they should have made without further input from the board. So I, I don't think, I, I certainly hope that the principals and the public don't perceive our vote as a disagreement with the principals. I think they did exactly the right thing in the situation and timing that they had. And now, it is incumbent upon us to act and give them additional direction and clarity in terms of what we as a board would like to see.
We thank you for that point.
Could we get a clarification of the motion, please? The wording?
If I understood the motion correctly, it is, it's to...
Does it follow the wording of the Assembly Bill?
It's to accept the, the proposed changes in the board policy, and that is the wording from the, the state bill that's being proposed and voted on next week.
And it is to make a change in the board policy rather than simply grant an exception?
I, I think it's to revise the current board policy, five one two seven, in alignment with the pending AB fourteen sixty-three, according to the attachment to our agenda.
And that's been seconded, right?
Yes.
Yes.
You know, just to be very specific in, in our direction, I think that we do need to pay, pay attention to the, the legal advice we got, that this is not about promoting a political viewpoint. This is about finding that the military uniform is consistent with the dignity and the decorum of the graduation ceremony. And this is the language from our attorney, but I, I think that is important to note, that that's why we're allowing it. It's not because we're supporting any one political perspective, that we feel that this is a separate class, and we're going to draw the exception very narrowly, so it would only be active-duty military.
Well, it seems to me that whatever we do, the, it will be trumped by the law in any event. I mean, if our, whether we, whether we included, whether we included Mr. Sholder's language or not, if the legislature acts, that will be the language. Don't need a board policy if there's a state policy, right?
Correct.
Any further discussion?
I call for the, call for the question?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, that's a, a very good discussion, and I hope everybody takes it in the light of all of our comments. Okay, item E two, approval of La Cuesta Facilities Plan Follow-Up Report.
Oh, go ahead, Bob.
No, I think, are you anticipating what I'm going to talk about?
I am, yes.
Go for it.
Well, this item is agendized as a follow-up to the La Cuesta Facilities Plan, and that was something that we discussed a year ago, and it was a follow-up to the facilities master plan for the school district. We were anticipating moving students from Los Alturas to, off of the junior high campus to another location, and then over a successive number of years, bringing students in from the other high schools, so that we had a more comprehensive program here centrally. Last year, we decided that that would be located here at La Cuesta, which is the Ortega Street side, actually, I guess it's seven-ten, Santa Barbara Street. There's been some questioning about board action on the bridge program. I took a look at the DVD from one year ago, and I have some of the documents from that board meeting, and there was talk about the bridge program last year. I would like it to be clear that, that the board has not taken formal action on the bridge program, and I would like to separate that out and bring that to you at our next meeting, so that the board can have more discussion about the bridge program and can take formal action on it.
You mean the one that exists now, or the idea of the San Marcos one, or both?
Both, both.
Okay.
Santa Barbara High School and San Marcos.
Yeah, I, I want to express my appreciation for what you just said. I, I think that clarifies issues, makes sure we don't get into Brown Act difficulties, and, and hopefully then invites a good public discussion and debate of the issues.
And so on this proposal we have in front of us, the entire line that relates to pilot bridge program for ninth and tenth grade, that entire line will be removed from this proposal and not discussed tonight.
That's right, we won't be discussing that tonight.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
And with that, let me ask Robin Swawski to introduce this on La Cuesta.
Okay, now, we will go forward with just the La Cuesta High School, and we have Principal Kathy Abney, and I believe we have some staff here as well, to go forward with the consolidated school plan that one of the students actually spoke about this evening, as far as having five classes and being able to have more of that comprehensive kind of high school feel. So, Ms. Abney.
Forward and back. Good evening. Seems like it was a long time ago, the last time I stood up here and talked about this. That was back in March, I think. Okay, the last time we met, you asked me to go survey my students, and my staff, and my parents concerning whether or not we should keep either the San Marcos campus or the Dos Pueblos campus open, based on, on student needs and transportation and any number of other items. You've since received a, a memo with the results of those surveys, and so tonight, I would just want to, you know, give you just a quick update on that, some attendance and suspension data, and then some fun things, and then staff has a few things to share with you. Based on the survey results, the twenty students at the La Cuesta Dos Pueblos campus that are going to be returning next year, that are not planning on either going back to Dos Pueblos or graduating, over half of those students indicated in the survey. And we actually had a survey completed by every single student who's currently enrolled, with the exception of four students who were not in attendance the week that we surveyed, and we were out there every single day of the week before spring break. They indicated they would either choose independent study or leave the district, go to Olive Grove, the STEP program, some other program outside of the district. We actually interviewed every student and got a survey from every student at the San Marcos campus. Twenty-one students are returning to La Cuesta San Marcos or back to our continuation programs next year. They would either enroll downtown or in independent study. None indicated that they would leave the district, given the choice of not being able to stay at the campus they were currently enrolled at. So the results indicate, from both parent and student surveys, that keeping the Dos Pueblos campus open seems to make the most sense in closing the San Marcos campus, and I think that that was pretty much the sense of the, the board at that point. I don't know, my tongue's not working too well tonight, I apologize. And I wanted to give you an attendance update. When I was here the last time, I gave you data for the first six months of the school year. This is the first eight reporting periods of the school year. I've given you, the first six months is down there at the bottom, where it says, that's sort of that little line down there at the bottom. And I went, the, the first eight months of the school year were at ninety-point-six percent at the San Marcos campus, eighty-seven-point-six percent at DP, and ninety-four-point-five percent at the downtown campus next door. So it's down a little bit at the two outlined campuses, which is pretty traditional in the spring, but amazingly, we have a slight uptick next door. And I have to tell you guys, I am so impressed with our kids. When, Thursday, when the fires were raging, as Santa Barbara High and Santa Barbara Junior High were closed, half of my students came to school next door. Now, these are, these are continuation kids that everybody would tell you they don't like coming to school. I had half of my kids here. Lots of them were evacuated, lots of them had younger brothers and sisters at the elementary schools. Friday, when we were the only secondary school in the district that was open, I had one-third of my kids here. So I'm, I'm, I'm pretty impressed with, you know, how they feel about being at the campus next door. So I think that's a real indication that partly they didn't have anywhere else to go, but they didn't stay home watching TV, they didn't stay home in bed, they came to school. And I think that's pretty huge. Suspension update, on the La Cuesta San Marcos campus, to date so far, twenty-one suspensions. And they all have to be off-campus suspensions, they have to be home suspensions because there's two teachers there trying to teach classes, not run a suspension center. The same for Dos Pueblos, there's been six suspensions on that campus. And the downtown campus, there's been a total of seven suspensions. Those are all served in-house, at the desk in my, or in the table in my office. And you can see it's been a, kind of a variety of things, the types of suspensions. At the outlined campuses, it's, it's difficult for teachers who are trying to teach and also do discipline. The administrators cross town, kids can actually leave campus at will. Here, it's a closed campus, they have to go past the secretaries and out the front door, so there's, you know, there's eyes that are watching them as they leave. Suspensions have to be off-campus, which means that we lose apportionment for them, whereas downtown, unless it's something pretty significant, which it hasn't been this year so far, they serve their suspension in my office, which is real boring by the end of the day. But they're in there doing their, their schoolwork, and they eat their lunch in my office. So, you know, from that standpoint, it's easier to manage, too, because there's places that we can send the kids to, we can send them outside for a five-minute timeout, those types of things. And then I just wanted to share some fun things with you. We have a collaborative with the Museum of Art, we use our art and performing arts monies, don't have enough money to hire an art teacher, but the museum sends us this marvelous young lady named Tina, who brings art projects about four times a year. And we did posters in the Spirit of Shepherd Ferry, that's what Maria was talking about earlier, having the, the art displayed in the front window of the museum gift shop. That's what you see here. And those young people are actually going to be doing a project at the museum on Monday, spray painting T-shirts, which they're talking about actually selling in the gift shop to help fund art programs for La Cuesta, at the museum gift shop and maybe on their, on their website. Wilderness, whoops. Wilderness Youth Project, we work with them also in a collaborative. Wilderness, whoops, Wilderness Youth Project, we work with them also in a collaborative, and students get an opportunity to go out and experience the front country, the ocean, the beach, places that they've never been. Many of our students have never actually been out of their neighborhoods. Community as classroom. With the exception of the Landshark, these are all walking field trips. We participated in the, of Life and Loss. Brian walked alongside us for a while. It was the Kristallnacht Commemoration in November, when we walked from the Museum of Art on a Sunday evening to the Bronfen Jewish Center. De los Muertos, our students actually created figures and participated in the altars that were set up at the, at the Museum of Art. We walked down to the Sea Center a couple of days before Thanksgiving, and like Maria said, she'd never been there. So we're trying to expose these kids to things that they've never seen before, and this is a rich environment here, there's lots of places you can go on foot. They've been to the Museum of Art a number of times, Halloween costume contests, this is my favorite one over here. Ms. Teton and I are teaching a knitting class on Friday mornings. The boys don't want you to know who they are, but we have boys that are knitting because they want to learn how to make beanies. Isn't that great? I just love it. We have a work experience class, we have a yearbook class, we're going to be producing about a 55, 56-page yearbook. We have a guitar class, our career day, which did get, we had to fold it because of the Hesocito fire, it has been rescheduled for next Thursday. Why Strive is a group that we work with, they're doing a, an employment project, the kids actually learn how to do resumes and letters of intent and those kinds of things. We work with AHA, they have a weekly group. Tapas Yoga Project, we have a yoga teacher that comes in a couple of times a week and teaches yoga. Amazingly, we have boys in the yoga class, girls, I mean, they love it. Maria, you saw earlier, she's an early graduate, she and Miguel both have graduated six weeks early, they've finished their credits up. She won the Mariachi Scholarship, $1,500. They're both Hispanic Chamber of Commerce honorees, they're both going to City College next year. Miguel's been at La Cuesta for three years, and a quiet leader. He was out at the DP campus, he opted to come downtown this year, and rode the bus in every day from Isla Vista to come downtown, and, you know, so that he could have access to, to five classes. Community participation, Joanna was one of the, the young artists on the project that was done at the Franklin Center, which was an East Side-West Side collaborative with the city, to paint this mural that's over here on, on this wall. And she also did this, this piece of artwork, but an opportunity for kids to also work out in the communities. And that I'm going to hold off on, and there's a couple of teachers that'd like to say something to you, and...
So we would like to talk to you about what we do, that is special education. For the last five years, Matt McCaffrey, Resource Specialist, and myself, Alejandra, that I am the school psychologist, have been providing the special education services to our La Cuesta kids, meaning search and find, assess, place, teach, provide counseling. With our old model, and I have worked in the district before for other high schools, but for the, the way it was structured for La Cuesta, as you will know, is two classrooms in the back, back of the high schools. So no matter how much we tried, I have to say that our services, we are not in compliance with the IDA mandates, and that's serious. What Matt could do was see kids with IEPs maybe twice a week for 20 minutes. I begged for, the good thing is that I have been in the district for a long time, so I know many people, but I had to beg for space to assess our students. And counseling, according to the IEPs, was done on a bench outside if the weather was good. And this is, the exception is DP. DP is set up in a way that has a nice, you know, small office in between the classrooms, so that is the exception. But that was the same way for, for all the other schools. Our kids are credit deficient, for whatever reasons, and to me, they deserve the same quality of services that we provide to the rest of our high school students, and that was not, was not the case before some type of consolidation. That's why I'm totally in favor of bringing the other two classrooms, so we can do as good of a job as we are doing here.
So, yeah, just, you know, as Alejandra said, as being the Resource Specialist, you know, this has been a great year for, for me. This has been my 11th year in the district, and I got my own classroom this year, as compared to what Alejandra was saying before, we were kind of in a small room in the back. In order for me to serve students, I would have to pull them out or work in the classroom. And one of the big things, being in, you know, trying to be an advocate for my special ed students, is I don't want to bring attention to that they have special needs, and so now with my own classroom, and being able to offer instruction, you know, that is not so noticeable, and before it was very, very noticeable. If the one outlined site that we want to bring down, and that is kind of currently the case, where it's, it's almost impossible to get away from, I have to pull students out and work on a bench outside, and naturally, other students are asking, you know, what are you doing working with that student, you know, and so they do get labeled very quickly. And just, you know, Alejandra has her own office this year, and students are very easily able to leave my classroom and get DIS services from her, you know, these are very at-risk students, and they need that counseling. The other thing is, with the IDA compliance with transition goals, IEP goals, like I said before, I'm able to meet their needs, have my own classroom, but the other big thing is with the transition goals, we have a couple up and running programs in the resource room, like Career Locker, and the big thing with IDA, as you know, with transition plans, you've got to meet their transition goals, and that's one thing I think we've made great progress in this year, is really, we've brought City College down, but we're also really focused on having these resource students, the transition from La Cuesta to, you know, vocational training or to City College. So it's been a huge improvement, and it's been a pleasure working at the, at the single site this year. I, I just feel much more efficient and effective.
Thank you. We're here to talk about the plan itself. So, Mrs. Abney, can you talk about the plan itself, as to what's, you know, the last time you were here, we were going to bring Dos Pueblos in and leave it at San Marcos, now you had a survey, now we're bringing Dos Pueblos in and leaving San Marcos. Can you talk about the plan?
No.
I mean, leaving, leaving, leaving...
Leaving Dos Pueblos and, and bringing San Marcos in. And one of the things that came up in the last, in the last presentation, in fact, also was that there had been no teacher input into the presentation, and so, you know, I, I was encouraged to also bring some teachers to share with you what's been happening downtown and, and what has happened previously and how it's different, and so that's why teachers are here this evening to speak to you. So if you, you know, if, if you would prefer just to hear from me, I'm, I'm happy, happy to keep talking.
I want to get to the point, I want to get to the point of talking about the plan itself.
And so, you know, basically, based on, on the matrix and the plan, it makes sense based on the survey, which you have seen the, the data, limited as it is, I mean, from our parents, we, we got very limited responses, but the responses that we did get indicated that transportation particularly is an issue from the Dos Pueblos campus. And the students from the Dos Pueblos campus indicated that it would be very difficult for them to get down here. The ones that have made the effort to come have done so, you know, against great odds. And two students that were here in the fall semester and that we absolutely adored and we hated to see go back, chose to go back to DP, just because getting here every day really was a Herculean effort. And we have a number of students down here right now who are San Marcos students, who come every single day and like being down here. So I think that the, clearly, the, moving the San Marcos students down here, if we are to consolidate another campus downtown, is absolutely the right decision. It's based on the survey data, and it's also based on the ease of transportation and the ease of getting down here. So that's basically what the matrix shows, is that, you know, it would be a, a moving of those two classrooms downtown for up to, you know, no more than 120 students. It would be six direct instruction teachers and one special education teacher, which is Matt. One of those classrooms would be shared, because Matt currently has his own classroom, because we have, you know, two extra classrooms, quote-unquote, one of which has got our cume records in it right now, so...
Yes, Dr. Noel?
A related point, because it's a little, I don't think it's clear at all, on the agenda, it says recommendation, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve of La Cuesta Facilities Plan Follow-Up Report. And it would be a lot clearer if we took off the Follow-Up Report, we're not being asked to, or are we, being asked to approve a report for a plan?
What, what we're actually, good point, what we're actually asking for is that, given, you know, the, the discussion we've had and the reports, we feel this is a very strong, viable, very effective program next door. And so what the, the plan, facilities plan suggests is that we're bringing two more classrooms down here. Those students could come from either one of the, or all of the three high schools, obviously, but we will leave a site, La Cuesta Galita will be at DP, and bring two more classrooms down to this site, so that we can have the, the direct instruction.
I, I think, when we get to the point of taking action, it would be very helpful to break out the action.
And that would be great. In fact, it is the approval of the plan.
Maybe it's, maybe we're approving five things, but it'd be nice, we could do one motion, but with five points in it, but I think it should be clear what action we're taking.
That's good, thank you.
Mrs. Deacon?
Can I just say really quickly, when, when Mr. Turnbull, last year, worked with La Cuesta and the facilities people to put this initial matrix together, it was with the idea of moving forward slowly. And so we, we brought two campuses and four classrooms down here. Ultimately, we wound up having to bring independent study down because of Santa Barbara's construction. So that's reflected in here, but then, so that was through '08, '09. And so then, the, the natural progression of the matrix as it was set up, and as it was initially laid out, would be then to bring two more classrooms down here next year, if things were going well, and if things were, if things had, had, you know, worked out as we anticipated that they would. And so, you know, that, that is the plan, is that, you know, things have gone well, things are going smoothly, thing, you know, students are learning, students, the two that you saw this evening are excellent examples of La Cuesta students. A year ago, I wouldn't have had either of those students standing up here speaking to you, they would have been, you know, little puddles of jelly, for one thing, and they, and they were not particularly academically successful a year ago. So they've grown tremendously as young women, they've grown as students, and they've grown, you know, for lots of different reasons, and I think we have a little bit of, of the credit for that, and, you know, there's lots of other reasons that they've grown. But this particular document was set up to be a three-year plan, and so next year is year two of that plan. And so the action would be, how much of year two do you want to enact? And it sounds like possibly you want to set aside the bridge program for, you know, for further action, but it's my understanding that, you know, that, that potentially you were going to act on the, the La Cuesta portion of it, and I, my recommendation would be not to move independent study back over there, because it's working really well here.
We're talking about column 209-20...
0910, yes.
910. With the exception of the box that says, "Create Pilot Bridge Program."
Yes. That, that whole line that goes across. Yes.
Mrs. Cudero?
I have, I have two questions for you. One is, is there still for 2010, for 2010 and 2011, is there still the expectation of moving community day school downtown?
You know, I think, I think that will depend on, on the board's will and the district's need for funding. That particular program would have gone into the basement, and so that would only happen if, in fact, the basement classrooms became available on this particular site.
Okay. And the other question I had was one that you, you just mentioned, when you were talking about bringing the two classrooms from San Marcos to the downtown site, you mentioned the, the number 120.
Right. We have 80 students here right now.
And so, are, is that a cap, that we will not exceed 120?
We enroll at, the, the state recommends continuation, enroll at 15 to 1, that's their ultimate recommendation. We enroll at 20 to 1, and the, the district's been very gracious to allow me to enroll at 20 to 1. There was a time back in very bad budget times, and not to imply that these are not bad budget times, but we enrolled at 25 to 1, one year, and that was just, I have to tell you, that was, that was a horror, and there's teachers sitting in this room that, that could confirm that. With an at-risk student population, 25 to 1 is a very difficult number to enroll at. So we enroll at 20 to 1, and so my expectation is that we would not exceed that. I, I would hope to be able to keep it at 20 to 1. I think it, it's a, it's a very workable number, particularly if we can keep students coming to school, 94, 95% attendance, 20 to 1 is an excellent number. If the attendance starts falling off, then you want to enroll higher, so that, you know, you've got about, you know, 18, 19 kids sitting in your classes every day. But 20 to 1 is, is the ratio that we currently enroll at.
I guess my question had to do with, and, and maybe I'm being too optimistic, or I don't know if optimism is the right word, but assuming that there were, I, I was wondering if we reached the limit of 120 students, and there were more students from San Marcos who wanted to attend, what would those students do? Would they be redirected to Dos Pueblos?
Well, right now, I mean, that, and that's always been a fine balancing act, that we've done at all of the La Cuestas. Los Alturas used to be the overflow campus. We have, we've always found a way to balance that. Right now, San Marcos and DP are both way under-enrolled. This campus is full. So San Marcos and DP have 30 or fewer students, and this campus has 78. And so that hasn't proven to be a problem this year. I've had a tough time keeping the two outlined campuses full, and so, but we're also looking at a couple of other options through independent study that have to do with parenting minors, who we are now enrolling because the CalSafe program is maybe going to, you know, lose some of its funding. So I think there's some other options where we, you know, we could, we could temporarily house students until there was an opening, and again, it's always that fine balancing act, and it's that, that, that point where sometimes families aren't ready to come, even though the school knows it's time, we know it's time, but the kid in the family just, they're not, they're not quite ready to come, so we put them on a waiting list, and, and by the time they're ready to come, we usually have an opening. So that doesn't usually prove to be a problem.
Mrs. Deacon?
Thank you. You actually answered one of my questions, Mrs. Abney, because I did have a concern that if we were to close San Marcos and there was too much pressure on the downtown campus, some of those students indicated they didn't want to go to Dos Pueblos.
Right.
And so where would the overflow go? But I, I think you've answered that, and I, I hope we don't run into that situation.
Right.
And actually, my other question had to do with the community day school as well, and I was unclear whether we were going to approve this as a whole package or go year by year, because I, but I would like you to actually, to answer a couple of questions about the community day school, if we were to move that downtown, as, as is being proposed in 2010. I don't know if any of the teachers here teach there, but I'd like to hear what those teachers think about bringing the younger students down to this campus and how that would play out.
None of these teachers teach there?
Right.
But one, one thing that we had discussed, and I'm happy to let them speak, is we would have a different start, start time and a different dismissal time for them. They run, they, by statutory, you know, edco, they have a six-hour instructional day, which means that they're at school about seven hours. They would start at a different time, and they would dismiss at a different time. They would come in on the Ortega Street entrance, whereas the, the continuation kids come in on the Santa Barbara Street entrance. So there would absolutely, and, and their, their lunchtime would be different, and, you know, we've toyed with the idea of whether they would come up for lunch, or we would take lunch down for them. I, you know, I think there would be lots of different ways to, you know, to keep the program separate, and I don't think that that would be a problem. But I, you know, we wouldn't know that until we, we got to it. But at, at this point in time, you know, we're approving things a year at a time, and so it would be, yeah.
Let me chime in on that. A year ago, I, I know you weren't here a year ago, a year ago, the plan that was approved by the board had phased changes, and at the end of each of those columns was an assessment and monitoring, so that we would come back to the board with a report on the success of that before we approved the next phase. So that's really our intention. It's to have you approve the changes for this next year, and then, depending on how well that's going, come back and have a discussion about the following year.
Do you have a motion about the column 20910, items in that column?
I'd like to move to approve the proposal for 0910, with the exception of the bridge component.
Second?
Under discussion?
I want to make sure I understand what I'm voting on. So this includes a move from San Marcos to this location. Okay. The monitor and adjust instruction, what, what are we approving when we, I mean, do we need to approve that? I'm just going by all the bullet points here in these, in this column.
Yeah. Do you want to?
Okay.
I was going to say that.
Trying to figure out where that is.
What we're, yes, it's right up in that first.
Ah, okay.
It's part of that direct instruction piece. What we're, what we are approving exactly is the board, well, the approval of the La Cuesta's facilities plan, which includes to move two additional classrooms to the downtown campus.
Got it.
And retain the La Cuesta Galita at the DP campus and.
Okay, that's in the second row, is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
And retain the independent study at the downtown campus.
So the second, third, and fourth bullet point in the first, in row one, column four are sort of like not part of.
Those are describing how that direct instruction downtown works, that there are the six direct instruction classrooms.
They're subsumed under the.
Exactly.
Under the first bullet.
Exactly.
Master schedule, all that kind of stuff.
All right, I understand. Thank you.
And just one other thing. There's no space problem at Dos Pueblos? I mean, that was an issue.
No.
Last time.
Well, I mean, you would, I, we'd have to speak to, I mean, you'll have to speak to that.
There's a space problem at Dos Pueblos, but we would dedicate this space for that program, and we have closed Dos Pueblos to additional enrollment.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming, all of you. Very nice to hear from you. We'll do E three and then E four, and then we'll take a break. So E three, appointment of community members to fill vacant positions on the Measure V Bond Oversight Committee. The recommendation is to point two at large, but I didn't see any names. Do we have any names recommended?
I, I actually would like to make a recommendation there. I know we don't have any names put forward per se, but I believe we had talked previously about asking Nancy Harder to serve on the Measure V Committee. You know, she was really instrumental in fundraising for Measure V and for actually getting, I'm sorry, not fundraising, but getting it on the ballot, and has a long history of knowledge with it. So I would like to put her name forward as, as a candidate to fill one of these open slots.
I certainly endorse that.
Mrs. Cudero?
Do, do we know if she is interested in?
I, I spoke to her today. She is willing to serve in this capacity.
I do, can we make a motion?
I was wondering if there's any other names.
Superintendent members of the boards, at the last Bond Oversight Committee meeting, the committee made a decision not to recommend names to the board as these at-large candidates serve per board appointment. Previously, we were aware of people who requested to be considered for membership on the, as an at-large member of the Bond Oversight Committee. And those people that requested to be appointed were included in the board agenda item. This time, to my knowledge, nobody is requesting specifically has come forward to say, I want to serve, and the Bond Oversight Committee chose not to make any specific recommendations.
Mrs. Cudero?
I have one question for him.
I've got Mrs. Cudero first.
Excuse me, go ahead, Mrs. Cudero.
The names that are listed here, the current at-large representatives, Jar Manderas, Larry Varanish, John Nelson has indicated that he is not able to serve any longer, and Michael Zirati. Does that mean that Mr. Manderas and Mr. Varanish and Mr. Zirati are interested in continuing?
Mr. Varanish and Mr. Zirati are attending most of the meetings. It's been a while since a representative of the County Taxpayers Association has attended a meeting. However, when the committee was formed, one of the guidelines was that one of those five positions would be reserved for the County Taxpayers Association inasmuch as, as they were in support of the bond issue, and they would be a major part of the oversight. The fact that they've chosen not to attend regularly may mean, I don't think it's a lack of interest, I think it's because those programs have pretty much wound down.
If we were to appoint, to appoint Mrs. Harder tonight, then there is at least one additional vacancy and.
Correct.
Three others that may or may not be interested in continuing.
I, I know Mr. Zirati, I, I assume, I haven't spoken to him personally, but Mr. Zirati and Mr. Varanish have been attending every meeting. Mr. Varanish is the vice chair, and the chair has not been able to attend the last few meetings, and, and Mr. Varanish has ran the meetings. I also want to point out, the board doesn't have to appoint two members tonight. The board could appoint one member tonight and ask for the item to be brought back. The board could leave the one position vacant for a period of time, or you can fill both positions tonight. It's truly, it's solely your discretion.
I just want to clarify something. Do we not need to reappoint any, I mean, the people who are on it currently just stay on?
I believe so.
Forever and?
I may want to refer to the bylaws and the attachment, but I believe that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just looking to fill two members at large positions.
The vacant positions.
They're vacant, and so, Dr. Noel.
My question was simply, how much longer do we need this committee? I thought the projects were.
The, the projects are winding down.
Winding down.
And I imagine that this committee, while at some point in time, when they meet again in September, that's the next scheduled meeting, will start discussing a final report to the board and, and recommendations for what they see as the future, and then it'll be up to the board to decide if they want to continue with the committee or not.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have a motion to recommend Nancy Harder?
I move, so moved.
Second.
Oh, go ahead.
Any discussion?
We'll let Mrs. Deacon second it since she brought it up.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously, and somehow we need to find a second member if we want one.
Can I also ask, would it be appropriate to contact the County Taxpayers Association and ask if they'd like to appoint someone else to come if Mr. Amandares cannot come? Amandares cannot come?
We, we can contact them.
Be nice to have a full compliment on that committee.
Okay, well, we'll leave it in Dr. Sarfis' hands to help us find another member at large.
Thank you.
Item E four, approval of a Measure H 2008 Parcel Tax Citizens Oversight Committee applicant. I think we have two applicants in front of us.
Yes, you have two applicants in front of you. We put this out and put the word out again on this. We had two people who were interested. So you do have the names, and I believe that board members received copies of those applications.
Do I have a recommendation?
Mr. Heron, I, I actually know both of these individuals, and I, they're both really qualified individuals. I, I think we could argue, or at least I could argue, the merits of both of them equally. I, I almost, well, I'd like to hear what other board members say, but I would almost propose maybe we just put their names in a hat, because I think they're both very strong candidates.
Well, I don't know them both all that well, I, but I do know Jean Blois. I don't know how to say her name.
Blois.
Blois. Okay. And I would, I would, I would move that we appoint her.
I, I guess I'm not quite ready yet to determine who I'm, want to support, so I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not ready for a motion yet, so that's why I'm not seconding that.
More discussion? Mrs. Cudero?
Well, yes. I also don't know Ms. Reich, Riche?
Richie. That's right. It's pronounced Richie.
Richie, okay. So I was wondering if maybe, we, we got a sense of her, her background and the things that she's done, but if you could just tell me maybe a little bit about what you would see as some of her qualifications?
Right.
Because I think Jean Blois is very well-known, and we kind of all are familiar with what her, her strong points are.
It's interesting, they're both named Jean, but Jean Ritchie is, chairs the Education Committee for the League of Women Voters, and she ran the, the forum that the candidates all participated in, and she's hosted a number of the education forums that are sponsored by the League of Women Voters, so she has an active interest in education.
Okay.
I think they're both really qualified.
That was extremely unhelpful, because it made the decision harder.
Anybody else care to make a motion? Or renew the existing motion?
Well, I'm, I'll reassert, I'll make the motion. I move that we appoint Jean Blois.
I'll second the motion.
We have one public comment, one speaker. Mr. Wheeler?
Thank you, Lane Wheeler, President of Santa Barbara Teachers Association. I was going to let you go ahead in your wisdom and, and make the choice, but because Jean Ritchie didn't seem to be fully vetted, I did want to just add a little bit. Jean is a former teacher in the district, former president of the Santa Barbara Teachers Association, is vastly experienced with educational issues, funding issues, and the result, not to disparage the other candidate, but I, I would believe that as an advocate for education, she would be an excellent choice, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for Jean Blois. Any discussion, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion fails? Do we have another motion?
Well, I'll move that we appoint Jean Ritchie.
Is there a second? That does, that motion fails for lack of a second. Now, that, that does put us in a situation.
Well, I want to make a third motion, which I would like to revert to my original suggestion, that I would like us to put both names in a hat and, and pick one, because I think they're both equally qualified.
I will second a, a sort of a, this process of selection.
Was that a motion you made or just a suggestion?
I think it's a motion. It's a motion.
I would argue against the motion. It's an abdication of choice.
I would argue against the motion too. But, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Mrs. Cudero, will you make your motion again?
I would like to move that we approve Jean Ritchie.
I will second that. Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
The motion passes three to one. With Mr., with Dr. Noel, then no vote.
Thank you, Mr. Heron. That was very generous of you.
Okay. That calls for a break now, and we're, golly, we're four minutes early for our break, so that's, that's a new record. Okay, we'll be back in 15 minutes. Resolution number 0809-41, recognizing Santa Barbara School District's Day of the Teacher.
And Dr. Robertson, our Director of Personnel Services, will present this.
Thank you. I'm here tonight to ask the board to recognize and honor the numerous contributions, special services, and quality education provided by our teachers for the Santa Barbara School District students. Therefore, it is recommended that the board approve the resolution that you have attached, Resolution 0809-41, recognizing May 13, 2009, as the Day of the Teacher.
I am proud to move that we adopt Resolution 08/09-41, recognizing the Day of the Teacher as May 13, 2009.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's an easy one to do. And I should mention, Dr. Noel wasn't feeling well, so he went home. But, public comment? Oh.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wheeler, I did miss you. I think we had two public comments on this item.
E six, where E five?
Oh, I'm, E five. Lane Wheeler?
Santa Barbara Teachers Association, thank you. We would like to thank the board for their proclamation and the recognition that they are sending out to all of the certificated staff, not only just teachers, but the psychologists and counselors and, and all the other support people that are there in the certificated unit. So we do thank you for that. It, it does seem somewhat paradoxical that this comes on the same day as a decision to riff some 65 teachers. And I know that's not a decision that's been made easily, but I would certainly encourage the board to continue looking at wherever those cuts can be made away from the classroom so that we can preserve those great educators, and we can support those folks who are some of our brightest stars that are hanging on by the, the seat of their pants to try to make a, a career here in Santa Barbara. So thank you for your proclamation. Please keep in mind the impact of those riffs.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler.
Mrs. Deacon?
Oh, I, I just wanted to follow up on that, because I wanted to say I was really acutely aware of the fact that, that here we're honoring teachers at the same time that we're laying people off. And so I hope you will communicate to the teachers how genuine this is, that this, it's really very hard for us, and I know they know that, but.
Okay, E six, approval of Resolution number 0809-39, recognizing Santa Barbara School District's Classified School Employee Week.
Dr. Robertson again.
I also wish to present a resolution to the board and ask you to acknowledge and honor the significant contributions that our classified employees make to the quality education and services provided in the Santa Barbara School Districts for all of our students and staff. So it is recommended that the board approve Resolution 0809-39, recognizing Classified Employee Week as May 17 through May 23, 2009.
Great. Well, I'm equally proud to, yes, would you like to speak before I make the motion?
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Sure. Angela Padilla?
Yes, I'm.
Followed by Lane Wheeler.
I'm Angela Padilla. I'm president of the Classified Employees Union. And I want to wish, I want to thank the board for adopting this resolution. I'm proud to represent the classified employees who provide many diverse services to students and staff, whether it's preparing and serving nutritious meals in our cafeterias, or repairing leaky faucets, or installing and troubleshooting computers, systems, assisting students in the classroom, or inspe, or ensuring that our campuses are clean, safe, and secure places. That's just to name a few. The work classified employees do every day is important and valuable, and I thank the board for recognizing our service, dedication, and commitment to the mission of the Santa Barbara School Districts.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Padilla. Mr. Wheeler?
And as president of the Santa Barbara Teachers Association, we too would like to salute and thank the great classified staff that we are privileged to work with on a daily basis, and we want to acknowledge the many contributions that they make as well, and to thank them from the bottom of our hearts for the great contributions. So one, also, I would put our support into that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler.
Do we have a motion?
I, I was about to proudly move that we adopt Resolution 0809-39, recognizing the week of May 17 through the 23, 2009, as Classified School Employee Week.
I would, I would like to, I would like to second that.
Mr. Heron, may I make a comment?
Absolutely.
Before we go, we are a people-rich institution. Almost everything we deliver, we deliver to kids, to people, through people. And our certificated employees, our classified employees are such an important part of all of that. We do have other employees, we have administrators, we will, we will honor them at our, our employee appreciation day, along with everyone else. But we deliver instruction, we deliver counseling, we deliver psychological assessments. All of the support services, whether they're clerical positions, whether they're custodial, whether they're instructional aides, are, are essential to the delivery of those services to students, and we recognize and, and honor all of those employees.
Thank you.
Mr. Heron, and I, I just want to finish off by saying that I know we're really mindful of, of the work that the classified staff does, that we couldn't run our schools without them. And I remember David Ortiz said yesterday that one of the groundskeepers at La Colina was there on Sunday cleaning up after the fire. So we know that our staff really does go above and beyond the call of duty, and we've seen that certainly most recently.
I, I know that the one at Washington was there also on Sunday.
They were all over the district.
All over?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. E seven, Board Action on Student Expulsion Case Numbers, and I'll let one of the two of you make the motion.
I'm, I'm really not in a position to make a motion, because given that I, my concern is that I feel both of these cases should be treated identically, and that's not the recommendation here.
Mrs. Deacon?
I'm going to go ahead and, and make a motion then. I'm going to move that we approve the recommendation of the Administrative Hearing Panel on Case 0809-57, stipulated one school year expulsion.
I don't think it was the hearing, was it the Hearing Panel or was it a stipulation?
Administrative Hearing Panel recommendation.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye? Aye. All against, opposed?
No.
Motion passes two to one with Mrs. Cudelo opposed. How about 0809-59?
I believe that's the case, that we have a forum, and it's a majority of those present. Am I correct?
Okay. So, so motion pass.
I'll make a sec-, I'll make a second motion. In Case 0809-59, I move that we approve the recommendation to a stipulated one school year suspended expulsion.
I'll second that. Discussion? All in favor say aye? Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion passes two to one. Mrs. Cudelo voted no. Conference Agenda 920, we have F1, Annual Report on English Learner Students. Dr. Hayden?
Well, this is a, this is a report that we've been producing annually, and of course, we're looking for gains. We include the English learner achievement indicators in the school plans for single, the school's single plan for student achievement. We look at those annually. It's something that, that we take on, carries a mission for the district and the schools. It's something that has been very stubborn, and as you'll see in tonight's report, again, we're not making much progress. There are some, some bright points, but I'll let Davis Hayden, who's our Director of Research Evaluation and Technology, present the report.
Good evening. If I can remember how to use this thing. There we go. Demographics are going to come first, just to remind you of what our district looks like. And so, this is a year back in nineteen ninety-four, we had two thousand five hundred and fifty English learners in the, in the elementary district, and you can see this goes up and down and around, but that's also the population of the district up there in the corner. If we were to go by percents, it's almost absolutely stable. We go between forty and fifty percent, up and down a little bit, but around. So, we've been carrying around forty-five percent English learners in our district forever, and I suspect that's not going to change much. I don't anticipate that that's going to change very much. This is the elementary district. Secondary district's a little more complicated to give demographics on, because English learners start changing into reclassified fluent English proficient students, but here is the grades, K through twelve, and even though that's going up and down, you'll notice that you, from the previous graph, it's actually stays steady at around forty-five percent. So, the average of those is around forty-five percent. Here in grade three, four, and five, we do not reclassify unless we're really sure that the student needs to be reclassified, so we've kept that down somewhat on purpose, because we don't want to make a mistake and reclassify a student that still needs help in terms of their English language arts development. In fifth grade, they start reclassifying, so we get some more in sixth grade, and in the seventh grade, of course, the other districts start feeding into our district, and the other districts have a much more liberal reclassification process. Their elementary districts, they go ahead and reclassify them earlier than we do, so that's why we have this real big bump here. It's partially from us reclassifying, but it's also the influx of our neighboring district students. If you were to actually, these are percentages, and we're going to see in a few seconds that actually, if you look at, if you look at actual numbers, there's a lot more students here than there is here, but the percentage is what we're seeing here. If you add these two together, we're back up to about the same percentage level as before. So, the English learners' percentage stays about the same. RFPFs take over, and by grade eleven, we have more RFPF students than we have English learners, so this is pretty straightforward. So, here is the numbers, the same graph as before, but instead of percents, this is numbers, and as you can see, if we add these two together, we have a lot more numbers of students that were either former ELs or are still ELs students, and that's, of course, the seventh grade. Numbers start to climb, and just as before, the RFPFs overtake the YLs. So, we have, both districts have a lot of English learners in them, especially the elementary district, and that is a very difficult load to carry, as Brian, Dr. Sarvis just mentioned. English learners, by definition, are learning English, and we're going to see that they're held to the same accountability standards as our English-speaking students are held to, which makes it very difficult for them to pass. English learners and non-English learners present that are socially economically disadvantaged, and in the Latino report last week, and I sent you some follow-up, I'm, well, it's going to be in the board brief, the board brief's being prepared, but you have all the follow-up data on that, that I presented, but once again, eighty-nine point seven percent of our English learners are SED students. So, once again, there's a heavy load being carried by our English learners of the students that are disadvantaged in our district, what you're getting, making a double whammy in terms of how well they do on the, especially the English Language Arts section of our No Child Left Behind STAR test. The non-YLs, I put them in here too, so you can see that. Not all socially economically disadvantaged students are English learners, but a hefty percent there. So, now we look at the elementary district and how they scored on the English Language Arts section of our STAR test, which go into our No Child Left Behind scores, and when, when the target was at around twelve, twelve point something percent, I can't remember what it was, twelve point four, I think, we passed it, but we've made steady progress, but unfortunately, the progress has not been fast enough for them to be meeting the targets set forth by the federal government. I, I just don't see that we're going to make any of these targets in the near future without incredible progress on our English learners. This is true throughout the country, throughout the nation, that this has been problematic. I just, I don't know how many times I can say it. It's hard to expect students who are learning English to pass a proficiency exam in English, so there's the problem right there. The math has, we've done a lot better with our English learners in math. Unfortunately, they ran into the target last year, and I suspect we're going to miss the target for this year's test that we, that the students just take, took. So, we're probably been, been failing the No Child Left Behind for both math and English Language Arts. The red means they're not passing the ELA portion of No Child Left Behind, and this is the math portion, and we only have one elementary school that's passing at this point in time for the English learner population, and that's Washington. And for the math section, we have one, two, three, four, five, and that obviously is reflected in those previous charts. We have more schools passing in the math still than we have in English Language Arts. This is the, I, I guess I included the state here. This is the state of California, K through twelve numbers, and they are still passing the K through twelve for the math, but they are also not passing for the English Language Arts. Secondary district. Okay, if we go to secondary district, and they have actually also been doing quite well on English Language Arts section of it, passing, 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 and then finally, last year, missing the target. So, a lot of this is, two factors for this. One is our junior highs are our stars in terms of the STAR test. They have done an incredible job of keeping their students meet, making the targets and moving upwards at a pretty strong pace. And the secondary high schools take the Casey exam, and we've also done a very good job of working really hard with our, all of our students and the Yale students in terms of passing the Casey exam. So, that is part of the reason why this, they have managed to make it and just missed it here, but I don't see that they're going to be able to make it as the targets keep going up. And here's the math.
Just go back to that last chart. I think accolades are in order, but that, because they did make a big jump from two oh six, two oh seven, to two oh seven, two oh eight.
Yes, they did.
And so, that, I mean, that's, the, the goal was so dramatic, but they did awful darn good.
And a couple of schools, I will say that DP made tremendous growth in their EL, and so did Santa Barbara High, and so did the junior highs, so a couple of the junior highs, so there was some strong growth in some of those schools in terms of bringing that up.
I think that's the message. Whether you make the yardstick or not, may not be the issue, is, is what is the growth, and the growth is on the right track.
And in fact, if you look at all of the charts I presented, almost every single one of them has had growth. It just hasn't been a fast enough growth pace to meet the targets that are going up and up. So, and here, we also see, except for this part here, this would be pretty steady growth going up. They made a nice growth here, but then they dropped back, so this is the math for the secondary district. And then, this is the individual schools in the secondary district, with Galita Valley and DP still passing the federal marks for their English learners, and then in math, we only had DP passing the federal marks for English learners. Gradu-, graduation rates, and once again, it's, this was, I don't, I don't understand this one quite. They, they did a great job that year, but in general, they're pretty even across the schools between, you know, seventy, the low seventies and the low eighties, it's fairly even. This is one year, and this is the next year, and the three comprehensive high schools. This is actually a fairly decent number to have in one year, passing the Casey exam, because they get three years to pass it. So, they take it in tenth grade, and then they take it again in eleventh grade, and they take it again in the twelfth grade, so this is, this is composed of all the tenth grade English learners, and then a scattering of English learners from the eleventh and twelfth grade. And by the time they actually go for graduation, we've got pretty decent numbers on our English learners graduating from high school. I think the high schools, once again, should be applauded for putting so much energy into getting their students to pass the Casey exam. Of course, it would be nice if we can get them all up into eighties and nineties, and that should be probably a goal for the high schools, is to raise it just that extra ten percent. Getting it, getting all the students up to a hundred percent, once again, would be very difficult. The students that have been successful have been RFPF'd by this time. So, what you have here are the students who have not been successful, and so they have, it takes a lot of energy to bring those students up to passing the Casey exam. And that's it for the EL report.
Since, since those are drops at all schools from one year to the next, have the numbers changed? In other words, are there more school, more students being reclassified as RFPF, for example?
I don't think the numbers have changed so much, and I would not, I, I know, except for this drop here, these drops I would not get too concerned about, because this could be just normal variations that go up and down. If we see a trend where the next year, where I, this is from Ares, this is from, this is data that's easy for me to track. If we see a trend the next year where they drop again, I would start to get concerned, well, what's going on here? But I highly suspect that next year, we'll see several of these go back up again, because this, this is pretty close to normal variation in, in your percentages. This drop here, though, I'd ask, I would maybe ask San Marcos, okay, you're doing a great job. What happened? That would, that might be a question to ask.
Okay, any questions of Dr. Hayden?
I, I actually have several, but first of all, are we expecting with the reauthorization of No Child Left Behind, and I expect, I know they're going to call it something different, but are those targets going to change? We anticipate that might happen, don't we?
Maybe. There hasn't been a lot of, I haven't heard, and, and haven't kept up that strongly with it, but I haven't heard a lot of movement away from the, the basic principle of No Child Left Behind from the Obama administration. In fact, there is somewhat support for it, so I don't know exactly where those changes are going to come, and how strong those changes will be. So, I, I, I would, I would put in my two cents for a few changes, like a national test, instead of having each state taking different tests and things like that, but I don't really know if there's going to be major changes coming down the road. Does anybody have more knowledge on that? I haven't heard of much myself.
I guess the, the biggest overarching question I have is, what are the lessons that we can draw from, in particular, the schools that seem to be doing well? At elementary, we see some distinct differences. I mean, how can we take what we learn there and translate that into achievement at the other schools?
I think I'll pass this on to Robyn Swaskin.
We have definitely had those kind of conversations, particularly at Washington School, and there's, there are lots of suggestions why Washington's English learners are doing better. One is that there are fewer at that school, and not just that, but they're surrounded with English, native English speakers all day long, for the most part. They also, because, when there are fewer English learners in a school, it's easier to have more one-on-one, smaller group kinds of instruction and supplemental work with them. But there are examples all over our state, I, I mean, I just have to keep going back to, we're not doing well enough. We're not serving our students, I believe. We're all trying very hard. We're all working very hard. Our rates are going slowly up, but there are examples all over our state that have the same kinds of populations that we see in all of our schools, not Washington, but have many more English learners, and they're doing a much better job than we are. We're looking at those schools. We, we look at it, and we try to implement the practices that we see, the different structures, the different ways of creating more learning time for our students, whether it's during the summer, after school, before school, lunchtime. We're continuing the conversation. It's very frustrating.
I, I will also say to that, though, is that we have been doing something right in a few of our junior highs, and so that's one place we can look at. Okay, what are they doing there? And I, I think there's been a lot of, of implementation of programs earlier in the junior highs, and in some of the elementary schools and the other schools, and there's been some real strong efforts by some of the principals to really work hard on these issues, and you could probably comment more on that, so...
That's, that's actually, that's very true, and I do want to add too, that you've been hearing a lot for the last three years about our English Language Development Program, and getting all the training in place with every single teacher, having our coaches, our teachers on special assignment, having the assurance that every student that's an English learner has thirty to forty-five minutes every day of English Language Development. That's, it's taken a long time to get that in place, and we now have an assessment instrument, the ADAPT, that tracks that, so teachers are getting more targeted, they, they get very specific information about what the students need. That's, that's taking place too, so it, it is a slow process. It's not fast enough for any of us, but I do know that we're, we're getting, we're going to see the results of that work. At the junior highs, there has been a very concentrated effort on, you know, classes, double block classes, where all the students are getting very targeted instruction in English Language Development, and I believe that's why we're seeing such a strong push, you know, the, the achievement growing there, and I anticipate we'll see more of that in the elementary district very soon.
Mrs. Cudelo?
I'm going to be, play the devil's advocate for a minute.
I'm gonna be, play the devil's advocate for a minute, um, because, I mean, I think all of us know the limitations of NCLB and I, I'm wondering, because I'm, I'm, every time we have these conversations and we get, we, we're focusing on looking at the scores and I always, in the back of my head, I'm wondering, yes, but are the students actually learning any better? Are they, are they becoming more educated or are they just becoming better test takers? Um, are we just becoming better adept at teaching to the test? Um, and at some point, it looks like the, the targets will be so unreachable that it becomes rather unrealistic to keep shooting for them. And I, I almost feel like that would allow us some freedom to then actually do what we think is educationally sound, rather than having to constantly try to reach a target on a particular test. Um, and that's, I guess, my concern is, is there any, I worry sometimes and I'm wondering if, if staff worries, um, that trying to improve the test scores actually gets in the way of trying to teach the students.
As, as far as the English learners are concerned specifically, because that's what we're looking at, the work that we're doing with, with ELD every day is not about a test at all. It's 50% of the time, it needs to be speaking and listening and responding and, you know, learning English and then learning how it fits into the content of the curriculum and it's not at all about passing a test and it's not filling in worksheets and it's not filling in anything that looks like a test. Um, we're much more concerned with students learning English and then being able to be successful within the curriculum. We're also very concerned about our students' writing. Um, we, we haven't done well enough job with that as well, particularly with English learners and so, I think you all rec-, can recognize that, particularly the English teacher, that when a student can really write and put down, you know, in a written form, what they're thinking and respond to the curriculum or, you know, any kind of writing, their achievement on tests is just gonna grow, but their learning is really going to, you know, improve as well. So, those are the kinds of things that we're really pushing, so we're not necessarily, I mean, we're, of course, we're looking at the test scores, but we're really focused on the learning.
May I respond to that as well? We're already behind the federal targets. Uh, we're behind in both elementary and, and secondary, uh, we're behind in English Language Arts and in math. Uh, nevertheless, some of these scores have never been higher. I mean, some of these scores are the highest we've, we've yet achieved. Uh, it's just that making, continuing to make gains is so agonizingly slow and, and it really is the hard work that needs to be done. The, we do believe that these scores actually do reflect real, real learning and do not reflect, uh, our ability to teach kids to game the test or, you know, increase motivation during test-taking. Uh, and we believe that because many of the changes we make, uh, and have made over just the last couple of years are very real instructional changes involving instructional time. Uh, when Robyn talks about dedicated time, then she's talking about the time that students did not get in the past in that dedicated instruction in, in English Language Development and we see that in the double blocking at this junior high level as well. Now, I need to make it clear that by double blocking into an English class that is designed to boost these kids' skills, they are not taking other electives. I mean, it really is to teach them English and because we're focusing on English and, you know, that, that may be worth a discussion right there, uh, because we don't wanna lose these kids either. Um, they're our babies and, and we wanna see them through to the end of high school and, until they've completed, uh, successfully their careers and, and be college-ready and job-ready in all of those things.
Well, well, that would be my question, is as our test scores go up, are we seeing more students going on to higher ed, being eligible for, um, UCs and CSUs, completing course requirements? I mean, it's one thing to, to, and, and I'm, really am playing the devil's advocate because I, I certainly want our test scores to go up as well. Um, so I, I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna pretend to be a purist and not at all, you know, worried about our test scores, I certainly am. But, um, but I'm just wondering, are we, the purpose of doing well in school is that you do well in life? Um, so are we seeing those, those end results going up? Are they ref-, are, are they being, are they reflecting back to us what we think is happening? That our students really are learning more?
Yeah.
That they really are getting the education and not just the scores? Um, oh, is that happening?
And how are we doing on the other indicators then?
Right.
And not just these star indicators?
Um, I can only speak right now for our internal and that is that we have a very strong high school graduation rate compared to the state and compared even to our local districts. So, for the external measures, we have joined CalPass and we have just, you la-, you voted to pass an MOU with UCSB. This will take some time, it'll take maybe several more years before we can actually make a report to you on some of the data you're asking for because we just don't really have good data prior to now. Uh, so that, unfortunately, I'm gonna have to say, we probably can't give you that, a report for another year or two at least. Uh, but at that point, we will have three or four years worth of data, we'll see where we're at and we'll be able to make a solid report on going to college and, and all those factors. These are English learners, I suspect we have a very low rate of them going to college compared to all the rest of our students, just because of some of the difficulties they're having. I'd also like to make a statement on the statistical aspects of these tests. Uh, they are standards-based, they're not perfect, but when you start giving large numbers of students, not perfect test, you start actually having pretty robust statistical properties on these tests. And when you look at the state of California and how other schools in the state of California are doing on these standards-based measures, that's where you start asking yourself, what's going on in Santa Barbara? And so, I think they are fairly accurately measuring how well the students know English or how well the students know math and that's the problem that we're facing is our, our numbers are not going up fast enough. They're going up, but they're not going up fast enough.
I, I would just like to comment, uh, Dr. Cyrus mentioned it would not meeting the numbers. From what I understand, almost nobody's meeting the numbers. So, I don't want anybody to take that as a criticism of our district. I haven't talked to anybody, I haven't read any reports, that anybody thinks that these targets are realistic. And so, I'm more interested in improvement. If the, if the schools are improving and some aren't, then I think we need to look the ones that aren't. But if we have a good trajectory up, uh, the targets are unrealistic by any stretch of the imagination.
There, there's probably about a third of the, uh, districts in the state of California that are still making the target, maybe 50%. I don't have the exact number, but they do anticipate that after this year's target, it will really drop quite a bit.
That's my point, yeah.
Yes. Um, so, and they're mainly missing the targets and exactly the populations we're really missing the targets on, which is English learners and English Language Arts, uh, and, and students with disabilities. So, yes, those two populations are making almost all districts and schools, uh, probably if not this year, next year, uh, missing the targets for No Child Left Behind. You're absolutely right.
I know it's not directly related to this, but, uh, Mrs. Deacon and Dr. Cyrus and myself attended the honors ceremony out at Dos Pueblos. And boy, when you see what some of those students have accomplished, uh, it's mind-boggling. Absolutely, I mean, the awards and the degrees and the achievements and where they're going and, you know, what they're, I mean, all, all types of people, uh, have tremendously succeeded in our system. So, it's, it's working in parts for some people, we need to make it work for everybody.
Mr. Hareen? Oh, I, I, just following up on your point of, for some people, I, I think that's the real problem.
Yes.
I mean, we have award ceremonies at all of our high schools every year and lots of students do well, but this is the population that we really need to focus on that isn't doing as well and I, it's my understanding, I guess, that we do this annually because the scores come in annually, but I'm wondering, I mean, maybe we, we do, the district does this and I just don't know this, but couldn't we talk about this more frequently? I mean, aren't there other measurements that allow us to look at this? And I also am a little concerned that it's always come so late in the evening when we ta-, when we looked at the Latino Gate, um, test scores or, or, you know, achievement levels, that was also late in the evening. I, I'd like to really put this, show that this is so important that we think it should be early on and, and I'd like to see it earlier on the agenda as well.
We can certainly, we are tracking our English learners from second grade through 12th and we have benchmark exams in place, benchmark assessments, so, we're, we, and we do this for all the students, but we track our English learners in particular. So, we can, beginning next year, if you would like to have those reports either at a board meeting or certainly in a board brief, we can show that data regularly. We're now able to do that in the elementary district with our Edgusoft.
Right.
And I'd like to add that we actually do discuss this an awful lot in, in the staff, it's just that it doesn't make it to the board very often.
Okay. Actually, I would really appreciate hearing it more because I, I really think this is our number one priority and, and I think we probably all agree that, to that, so it just, to get it out there and discuss it more often. Um, and I don't know if there's other measurem-, I mean, I know we're using these tests as our, you know, these measurement tools, but if there's other ways to assess what's working and what's not working? 'Cause it really sounds like even you, Mrs. Swawsky, think that there's some things that just aren't working and we need to figure that out.
Yes, we do and, and just this year, we do have the ability to track it much more clearly and targeted because we have that Adept assessment that is for kindergarten on. In fact, our preschool is now using that. So, our English learners are coming into kindergarten with a transition meeting with their Adept scores, so the teacher knows right off the bat where they are with English Language Development. So, we have those, that assessment just on that and then we have the benchmark assessments that, that are aligned to our, um, content standards. So, we can share all of that. So, we have a couple of more formalized assessments and then we have all the work that teachers do regularly in grade level teams and department teams. And those are, these are the students that our teachers are focused on.
Good, thank you. F2, report on vandalism costs. Oh, oh, we have, we must have a public comment on that.
I apologize, I'm falling down on the job. I'm not used to being in this position.
Sleep at the wheel.
Sorry, Mr. Wheeler.
Can we get Mr. Hayden to give us some input on that? Uh, thank you very much, Lane Wheeler, Santa Barbara Teacher Association. Um, a couple of things I wanna call to your attention on this is, one, the great job the teachers have done in driving these scores up. If you look at this over the last 10 years, as Dr. Cyrus very keenly pointed out, there has been a monumental amount of gain in, in student performance and that's been driven by the, the great job teachers have done as they refine their skills and really direct their, and target their instruction. Um, also, I, I would like to make sure that you're aware that NEA, the National Education Association, particularly driven by the California Teachers Association, Association has, has been and will continue to be a player in the discussion of what NCLB's reauthorization will look like. Had NEA and CTA not been involved in the original conversation, it would have been much more draconian and, and would have been much more punitive in its application. So, we've made, uh, I think, some very large strides there. NEA, CTA constantly says we're going to rewrite, reauthorize, erase, rewrite, reauthorize. So, hopefully, we'll get it, uh, closer to being right and, um, once again, and given Mr. Smith's, uh, delicate, uh, situation right now, as he's acknowledged in the media today, I wanna really point out that there has been a tremendous amount of growth here and, uh, don't wanna push him over the edge, he's too valuable a resource to our district. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler.
F2, report on vandalism, vandalism costs.
Well, the board asked for a report on vandalism costs and Dave Hetjunk, our Director of Facilities and Operations, will deliver that report.
Thank you, Dr. Cyrus, members of the board. First of all, I'd like to point out that a lot of minor vandalism never reaches us here at the district office. It's taken care of by site personnel, mainly custodial staff, who may have a, a supply of, of paint and graffiti remover on campus and minor things, they take care of it as part of their daily routine. And so, I don't really have a good number on the amount of time that a custodian at any particular site may spend doing that or, or what amount of, of material they would use for that. Um, when it rises to above, a level above what a custodian can handle, we get a, a work request in the maintenance department. Uh, schools are encouraged to not only submit work requests for any vandalism, but to call immediately and leave a message, uh, on, on the voicemail in the maintenance department. And when the painters come in every morning, the first thing they do out, do is go out and, and take care of any graffiti that may have occurred that the school site is unable to take care of themselves. That's our number one priority is to erase it so, so it's not seen. And, um, this report is basically, uh, by site with costs rounded in the nearest hundred dollars. I have specifics, if any board members are requesting any specifics, but it's a broad range of painters, carpenters, locksmiths, uh, that respond to, to vandalism or, 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 you know, whether it be graffiti, whether it be, uh, a damaged locker, uh, I think those are the two of the most common things, uh, broken locker.
Any thoughts on Santa Barbara High School being so far out of context with the others?
Uh, no, I, I wish I did.
Does this reflect the, um, the break-ins with, involving the, um, I think the forge room and the computers?
If, if there were, if, it'd be, it would not include the cost of anything that was, uh, um, taken or stolen in a break-in. It would include the cost of, of, uh, replacing a broken window, replacing a broken lock, fixing a door jamb that, that was, was damaged, uh, things of that nature. But, but it wouldn't include any costs for anything that may have been taken.
Mr. Hareen?
Mrs. Deacon?
Well, thank you, you answered some of my questions about the nature of the work and I, I think, I'm sure we all looked at the fact that Santa Barbara High is more, close to 10,000 or more over the other schools and, um-
It's also a more wide-open campus.
Right, right. And, um, and I wondered if there were any kind of large, big-ticket items here that account for that or is this just an ongoing incremental problem?
Uh, let me look a second. Uh, the two largest items on here are graffiti, um, one in the amount of, uh, 1,200 dollars and one in the amount of, uh, 700 dollars, which was a pretty good-sized act. So, there's, there's two simple acts of graffiti right there by hopefully only two individuals or a small group of individuals that, that really, you know, skewed the costs. 'Cause typically graffiti is, is a few hundred dollars to, to paint over, not 1,200.
Are there any security strategies that we could employ to, uh, to cut down on the incidents? I don't know, cameras? I, I mean, I don't know if that's realistic, but, I don't know.
Yeah, in, in order to, to, to use cameras, you're gonna have to spend a significant amount of money to get a, a system that is, uh, high-tech enough where it's gonna be able to identify people or persons mainly tilt, zoom and color versus just the old standard, uh, black and white camera where you really have trouble identifying a person. Um, uh, there, there's two different philosophies on, on lighting campuses and leaving campuses totally dark. Uh, we've, I think this district is of the opinion that, that we, we try and light things at night, though not to excess where it's, it's, it's daylight, but to where, to where there's not an area where if somebody happened to be around, that you wouldn't be seen. Uh, and, uh, if somebody really wants to, to tag something, they're gonna find someplace on, on that campus to tag. Uh, I, I don't think we'll ever defer all vandalism and graffiti and, other than, than one site maybe being skewed, I, I was surprised when I saw this report that the dollar amount was what I consider to be for the task of, of going out and doing this repair, that it was as low as it was. I expected it to be higher, to tell you the truth, when I asked for the report.
Let me piggyback on that, Dave, because we have seen just rising graffiti. We've seen a lot more of it. In fact, the entire community has seen a lot more of it. And we think there are some associated problems with it, but, but that's a concern to us and, and we're not the only ones. I mean, that, that's not, that doesn't make me any more comfortable. But boy, the entire town is being hit and hit hard.
Are these weekend events typically? You come in Monday morning, you've got a big problem, or is it spread out through the week?
Typically on a Monday morning, the painters know there's definitely gonna be graffiti somewhere and, and they'll, and they'll be dispatched first thing to take care of that. So I'd, I'd say it's, it's mainly the, the, the reports that we get. Sometimes we'll get a call from the Park Rangers. Our Park Rangers do patrol our schools and a lot of times on the weekends, I'll get a call from the Park Rangers, there's graffiti at this site, this site, and this site. And I'll go ahead and, and call our head of maintenance, Bruce Chavez, and give them a heads-up that, that first thing Monday morning, these sites have been reported by the Park Rangers. That way they know about it before the sites show up and, 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 and call it in. We kind of make a decision on the nature of the graffiti, whether it waits till Monday morning first thing or whether we do overtime on a weekend.
If we know that it's happening primarily on weekends, is there a way to work with the police to just have an increased presence?
Well, our, our, per our joint use agreement, we do fund part of, of Park Ranger salary to, to do patrol and, and, and they do respond well to unauthorized users, to, 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 to walking around, checking, checking windows, doors, walking a campus. So as they are going from park to park, they do swing by schools also as part of their route or their beat.
Any further questions?
But other, other than that, there, there's no, other, other than the regular due diligence of, of the police departments, of Santa Barbara County sheriffs, I don't think there's anything special other than, than the Park Rangers of, of our in-city schools.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're going back to the consent calendar. Item D4 was pulled by Dr. Noel. Since he's not here, do I have a motion to approve D4?
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion opposed. Motion passed unanimously. Mrs. Cordero, you have pulled D5?
I asked to pull D5 just because I needed to recuse myself from voting on this one.
Does that mean we don't have a, I guess?
Well, we still have a, a quorum present and it would be a majority...
I know you need this one done, okay.
Of those present.
I'll move to approve D5.
I'll second the motion. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. With Mrs. Cordero abstaining or...
Recusing.
Recusing. Mrs. Cordero, D6?
Yes, no, I had just, sorry. I, I'm assuming probably all of us had some concern about adding more money into this position from the unrestricted general fund, given how much we're cutting back in everything else.
And we had the same concern. Maybe we could have Mr. Smith speak to it and our efforts over the past year.
I mean, we had the same, I mean, I'm in a very uncomfortable position myself, given that, you know, I, I feel a great burden relative to the budget and the budgetary process.
And you're depressed and all.
Yeah. And, you know, I, I, I think what we're struggling with is this is a position that's been recommended by school services, FICMAT, our independent auditor, because we're fiscally accountable. It was authorized last year. We've flown it twice. We've been through interview processes twice. We can't find anybody that's, you know, a qualified applicant. Ideally, we would probably need somebody who has a CPA that, you know, is proficient in, you know, segregation of duties, internal controls, and things of that nature. And I think what really resonated is that we got a agreed-upon procedures report from our new independent auditor and some of the comments they have in here. The dispersing officer, which is what you're required to have when you're fiscally accountable and you can write your own checks, both for accounts payable and payroll. The dispersing officer was unable to locate an organization chart that specifically identified the position of dispersing officer. The dispersing officer has independent access to legal counsel, but the construction of the position is not sufficiently independent of the accounting functions. The dispersing officer is the accounting coordinator, who admittedly has access to all accounting records and management override capabilities. There is no independent internal audit associated with the dispersing officer. Recommendation: We understand that the district's in the process of filling a vacant internal auditor position. We recommend that these duties be transferred to the internal auditor. Then again, question number 11, audit of warrants. There is sufficient documentation for warrants, for example, invoice, proof of delivery, purchase order, and signature to pay with a few exceptions. The exceptions include staff comment that invoices are sometimes sent in from school sites without a specific purchase order for payment, lack of full documentation for all credit card charges. Specifically, our testing of accounts payable found that two out of 69 expenditures had purchase orders dated after the invoice, three percent, which shows the lack of pre-approval. Recommendation, and then it goes on to say, the audit procedures contacted by the district, by the dispersing officer inadequate for two reasons. One, consolidation of the district officer, the dispersment officer and accounting coordinator position means the employment, the employee is potentially auditing her own work. Second, due to the time constraints, the dispersing officer is only auditing large invoices, attorneys, consultants, mileage reimbursement, travel reimbursements, utilities, construction, and anything not paid on a purchase order. While these invoices might be high-risk areas, other potential problem areas might not be caught. Recommendations: The duties at the dispersment officer should be separated from the accounting coordinator. Once again, we understand that the internal audit position is in the process of being filled. And so we're kind of getting hit over the head with this thing now, where our prior independent auditors didn't make that big of a deal out of it. So we're kind of between a rock and a hard place on this one in the sense that we know we need, need the position, but we also know that we can't find anybody at the salary level that we're at. So I'm kind of at your mercy on this.
Let me just review. Before I became superintendent, we had FICMAT come forward and say, you need an internal auditor. Mary Stark was always going to hire an internal auditor, but we were always short in our budget and we were always looking at budget cuts. This all came to a head and we brought in School Services of California and they said, you need an internal auditor. We spent a year looking for an internal auditor. We have not been able to find that person. We have our independent auditor actually stepping, stepping in and making a number of comments that are really appropriate roles for an internal auditor. And we really feel that we have no alternative. I mean, we, we didn't want to bring this to you. We wanted to find someone much earlier this year and we just have no other alternative. We have to bring this to you and we need a salary upgrade for that position.
I think the one other change and complexion from the time that the board approved this position is that now we have an additional compliance issue with the two parcel tax measures that we did not have. And I would assume that this position would play a role in that as well. I mean, I know I'd like to not have to go to those meetings, so.
Go fish.
Meg?
Is it worth $10,000 to go to those meetings?
Oh, no, you would still be at those meetings.
No, I, I know. But there, there's a significant amount of work relative to the interaction with the auditor controller and the, I mean, more than I think we ever envisioned when we went over there. It was wow, so. But that, that's something that has changed since the time that the board originally approved that position.
Well, I'm, I'm very aware of our need to be good financial stewards and I think having an internal auditor is, is really essential. And I think we've heard from lots of parties that we need to do this. So as much as it's really painful, I will go ahead and move that we approve this item, D6, and with the hope, maybe this, a new person might find some more money for us. I don't know. Can we task them with that as well?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Dr. Noel pulled D10. Do I have a motion to approve D10?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to say, Mr. Gonzalez, maybe you got my note from this, but I don't know when we officially became the Santa Barbara Secondary School District, but on both this, on the resolution, it, or on the contract, rather, it still says Santa Barbara High School District.
I'll, I'll go ahead and address it. Actually, the board action moved us to that point, but the change has not been made at the state level. In fact, we're going to have to bring additional, an additional item to you. We'll do it in consent to force the, the state to make that change.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Okay, I think that handles all the consent items. Move to item H, coming events.
I was just wondering if there's any, if we know when we're going to be getting the list of graduations and et cetera, that we need to be arranging our schedules for?
Good, good. I'll make sure that gets out right away.
Okay. Thank you. They're coming up more quickly this year, so.
Coming up very soon. Good.
Any other coming events? How about under Board Comments or Correspondence? Just a comment that, I think it's already been said, but the last week was phenomenal. Really was, the communication of what was going on with the schools was phenomenal. So I think that's, we've all said it, but we really appreciate it. Future agenda items? I presume after the, then for the next meeting or some point after the election, doom and gloom or happy and we'll hear something?
Yeah, well, on May 14th, which ironically is my birthday, we'll hear a pre-May revise, May revise. And then after the 19th, probably around June 5th, we'll hear the actual May revise delivered in June. You got all that? So I would imagine we will not be able to give our normal May revise report until the first meeting in June, although we'll probably be sending out correspondence.
That's significant because we will have a heads-up on the May revise and that's in anticipation of the possible failure of the ballot initiatives. And that has a huge impact on us and we should have a discussion at our very next meeting, which would be, what, May 26th, 28th? 26th, thank you, about whether we want to consider further budget cuts.
And, and one of the issues there will be how, if there's a $600 per student hit, how that manifests itself. If it's all revenue limit, if it's 50% categorical, 50% revenue limit. Because if it's all revenue limit in the elementary district, we will have somewhat of a basic aid revenue limit entitlement will stop our freefall. But that's probably a whole nother discussion we need to have. But if, there's various permutations that it could take. And until we know what's coming out of Sacramento, if in fact the propositions fail, I mean, I'm hesitant to get too far ahead of that.
The other issue at some point is the federal stimulus money. I mean, everybody thinks there's a ton of money coming. Everybody thinks it's to stop the layoffs, to keep employment, to do achievement gap. I mean, it's a whole list of, of good things that are happening with that money. But someplace, we need to have reality check as to what it is and, and what happens to it.
Right. And I would think that we would dovetail that into that discussion and kind of wrap it all together.
Okay. Any other future agenda, or, yeah, yep. Anything else?
Well, we will also bring back as future agenda item, some form of the Santa Barbara continuation and San Marcos continuation bridge program for your consideration.
Okay.
Thank you.